I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
All right, uh, roll call please.
Councilmember Lewis?
Here.
Councilmember Leibert?
Here.
Councilmember DiGolio?
Here.
Vice Mayor Blumer?
Here.
Mayor.
Here. Uh, I don't believe we have any presentations.
Yes.
Oh, please. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm gonna ask.
Is there another agenda's presentation?
Oh, it's public comment?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so I'm gonna slash, we have no presentations, we're gonna be moving into public, see, I flung the tail by you though. Uh, and I'm gonna move into public comments of items that are not on the agenda. It's all good.
Thank you. Hi, everyone, my name is Lori Kretschmar, I'm here for Seventy Strong. I met Mayor, Vice Mayor Whitmer at the emergency drill in Menlo Park, he invited me to speak, thank you. Seventy Strong is a free service especially designed for residents of Atherton and some nearby communities, and I would really, I'm asking each of you, everyone in the room tonight and on YouTube, um, to go to the website at seventystrong.org, seventystrong.org, or we have a phone number which I'll mention in a moment, and you'll find all kinds of, it's really free guidance for people sixty and up, maybe not you, maybe your neighbor, and we wanna help people stay active and age well. Um, so we've got everything from, um, you know, the songbirds choir, tai chi, yoga, softball, to support groups for if you have an illness or you're a caregiver, um, we have all kinds of volunteer opportunities, uh, we have information on dementia, aging in place, you name it, it's all about keeping people sixty and up active and aging well. And it's funded through the Sequoia Healthcare District, and it's managed by the nonprofit Peninsula Family Service, and really it's a terrific free service for residents. So please, I'm asking each of you to go to the website, tell people, especially if you run into someone who's feeling blue or lonely, or, um, you know, they, everyone, we all know we need to exercise but always do it, that's a good time to tell someone, hey, check out this free website, Seventy Strong, and, uh, you can also call, I'm gonna tell you the phone number, you ready? Uh, we have some flyers. The phone number is six five zero seven eight zero seven five four seven, and I'm gonna repeat that, that's six five zero seven eight zero seven five four seven, and when you call you'll reach a human, uh, who's very knowledgeable about the community, we call them community navigators, and they will give personalized recommendations, um, for example, if someone loves softball, um, did you know there's a softball league out of Redwood City, the, the most experienced player is about ninety-two, the youngest is fifty, they travel by the way, yeah, um, and so we can really tell you, um, in depth about whatever you're interested in, um, so, uh, that's, now you know about Seventy Strong, and the hardest thing is to get the word out, trying to take all my three minutes here. Okay, so if you promise to tell somebody about Seventy Strong, then I will give you back thirty seconds. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, um, can I go ahead and move into the city manager?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the city council met in a closed session to discuss performance, evaluation of one person, uh, the council discussed the matter and had no action.
Thank you very much. Um, I'm gonna do a little order of visits here before we jump, before we move into the operational side of the city management report. Um, we are going to be shifting item number eighteen into the front section for consent calendar, so it'll be the first item that we will hear, I think the majority of people probably hear it before that, I apologize, uh, and we'll, it should, I think, I'm gonna put the kiss of that on, so I'm not gonna say it. Uh, so I'm gonna go ahead and move into the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I mean, with the time given along agenda, you have the written reports in front of you, staff, you have any questions you might have during our previous agenda one-on-one meetings, there were no C and A Q and A related to the city manager.
Any questions for the city manager?
Uh, city manager? Any other comments on how much the city manager's report? Seeing none, I'll close comments in city manager's report. Uh, any final comments for short? None, we'll move on to the next item, uh, consent calendar, can I get a motion to approve our correction? Any members of council want to pull any item on consent calendar, eight through ten? Seeing none, any member of the public would like to pull item eight through ten on the consent calendar? Seeing none. See how quick we move, it's almost like an auction. Uh, can I get a motion to approve items number eight through ten in the second meeting? Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All right, so now going back to where we were, can I get item number eighteen please, which is the city center project, that thing?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, and members of council, my name is Marty Henning, the project manager. Uh, Mayor, tonight's meeting is a working session with the council to review and discuss and provide direction to staff on design changes and value engineering options that are being recommended by staff in the project management committee, the subcommittee of CCAC for the library only, and to provide direction on funding issues related to the overall project. As you may recall, at the June twentieth, twenty eighteen council meeting, staff presented the two bids from Hensel Phelps and Ovira for council's consideration, and we provided four options, the first option could have been council to award to Ovira Construction as the lowest responsive bidder for fifty-six million three hundred eighty-one thousand, staff did not recommend that. Uh, the other options that were considered by council was the, was the second one, to reject bids and rebid the project as is to be open market, and then three, it actually had three parts to it, number three, it was a three A to three B, was to reject bids, redesign to include more value engineering options, and either A, repackage the current project into an optional phases award option and rebid to open market, or B, three B, reduce project scope and rebid to open market. And the fourth option presented was to reject the bids and repackage as a design build option. After much consideration and discussion, the city council directed staff to move forward with option three B, which is again to reject both bids, redesign to include more value engineering options, redo the, reduce the cost of the project, and rebid to the open market by the end of this calendar year. Furthermore, at that council meeting, council provided the following direction, is that is to design both buildings, the admin city hall PD building and the library as base Cal Green buildings, adding any lead items to green features as add alternates, also hold monthly check-in work sessions with the council, which is our first one, and also hold weekly meetings with the PMC, which we're doing, and the council also established the firm budgets, uh, for city hall PD building as twenty-four million, which includes all the necessary site work, and for the library, the budget was set at sixteen million with all the site works, for a total project budget of forty million dollars. Also council directed staff to get a peer review estimating firm on board to review and confirm project estimates provided by MAC five, the construction management company, and currently staff is in the process of getting a consultant by the name of TBD consultants on their contract, which I believe we'll have by the end of next week, early next week, to have them start work on that. And also council asked for an outline at a high level of cost variances between options three A and three B, which I go over in a second, and also provide final bid documents for council approval by December of twenty eighteen. And, so I worked with Pauline Souza, who's in the audience here, who'll speak here in a few minutes, to give us her estimations about differences from a cost standpoint and a scheduling standpoint for option three A and three B, and for three A, it would be two separate bid packages developed in sequence at the same time, and the assumption they made is that each building would require about four months to redesign, and the library would be about three months plus or minus, and the range of, the cost range at this point that they've been able to give is three hundred eighty-five thousand to six hundred ninety-five thousand. Option three B, uh, which is the one the council directed staff to move forward, understands this is a one modified bid package option, and the schedule for this effort will be required between five to six months to redraw and update its specifications, with a fee range between three hundred and twenty-five thousand to five hundred and eighty-five thousand. So, before, um, we get into some of the attachments, and we're gonna be discussing attachments three and four in your staff report, and John Schluter and Pauline Souza will be up to discuss that and walk you through some of the value engineering options that have come through the previous meetings with PMC and staff. We do, staff do, does wanna get direction on one other, uh, item that is not in your staff report, and that is, staff is seeking council directions tonight, whether the town should prepare for council's future consideration, maybe in August or September, whenever the meeting is, to prepare a bid package to move forward with the demolition of library, library building prior to getting a general contractor under contract sometime in the spring of twenty nineteen.
We're just looking, we're looking with respect to that, we're just looking for some feedback from the council, that has to come back to you for.
Right, and, uh, so this would allow the general contractor to begin work immediately once under contract and go vertical versus having, have them come in with a demo contractor and, and waiting for that to happen, so that would save at least a month or so of the schedule, and the estimate that we have at this point for doing a demo, standalone demo would be about two hundred thousand dollars. So again, as the city manager mentioned, we're just looking for some feedback on that either now or later on during the meeting, it's up to, up to the council for that. Um, Mayor, that concludes my presentation, now again we have Pauline Souza and John Schluter, who here are discussed, and you should have these in a full-size set from the city clerk plans, and I believe they'll be up on the screen too for the audience, uh, and there's I believe five pages of these value engineerings, uh, discussion that we're gonna go through with you, and, uh, again, get your feedback and direction. We're not asking for any formal action from the council tonight, it's again just for feedback and some informal direction, are we moving in the right direction on some of these items?
Following the V E conversation, this is a long item, following the V E conversation, in the staff reports, a narrative around the project funding, staff's looking for some feedback and brainstorming from the council on the overall project issues related to funding.
So John, do you wanna come up and?
Thank you, Marty, George, for the introduction, thank you Mayor and council for hearing us tonight. Um, so just to give a quick synopsis, following up on what Marty offered, so tonight the real focus is on the library, as we know the project involves the city hall building, admin building as well, but we wanna focus in on the library in terms of our value engineering discussion tonight. Um, and that being said, I wanna qualify, you can see a list or a spreadsheet that's been pulled up on the screens, these are, uh, options that review several things, and we've organized this in the columns that you probably have in front of you, so you have, you have our base bid drawings, what's been bid currently on the far left, and then we have two columns that look at essentially what is the lowest cost version of this building we can do that, um, still works within the, the program that we have currently, or the size, the square footage that is currently in that building. Um, so that is irrespective of maintenance, uh, long-term costs in terms of operations, it, it really just looks at what can we do to get this building down to the lowest first term cost. Uh, and then the next column, the recommended balanced option, what this does is it takes each of those options and it says, what can we do that still brings value to the project but maintains a bridge between the original design, what's been approved by the library, the community, and you as well, uh, but still brings that value, so it's trying to balance between the two of those. We can't always capture everything in two columns, and so the final column on the far right is pricing alternates, or in some cases items that could be deferred, where we could look at costs in a future scenario that might still bring value. Um, so that gives the context of this?
Please. Just to interrupt just one second, um, this, um, John has submitted to the PMC group and staff, uh, a couple of weeks ago, um, a spreadsheet similar to this, and that he conceived, went through, and massaged, and then this is a refinement of it. There are no numbers associated, there are no actual dollars and cents of if you did this, what you would save, or what you wouldn't save, because, um, that is still in process, and so it's coming to council as part of the evaluation team to kind of make some judgment calls as to, you know, uh, how you feel about what to do and what not to do, then maybe value engineering, and we've been talking about value engineering in these projects from day one, this is our opportunity to do that, um, but we don't have the dollars and cents, and we don't have the amount of, uh, dollars that it's gonna cost, like if we say, well, you know, do something, uh, really outrageous, like build a whole building, design whole building, the design cost, you know, the development, the design cost is not factored in here, so, um, just kind of put in that context.
Yeah, no, that's good, that's a good, that's a good context.
Yeah, so, and we've got the plan in front of us of the library that we can kind of reflect a little bit.
Great, yeah, and we've got that large too, if we wanna huddle around it, I know this is a working session, so in the spirit of being up and active, we have that as well.
And can I also ask about, does anybody, go in, um, here is in our packet a list, uh, library that has negative red numbers, uh, and suggests by Ovira, W R N S, and that.
Exactly, two ways, one to seventeen, one to twenty-seven.
Okay, I'm looking at the, I have one on the.
Seventeen.
I was looking at the ones, um.
Seventeen.
Yeah.
The one on twenty-seven, go to twenty-seven.
You go, so. Yeah, so, so, uh, these numbers, uh, I, I have a question, so is any, are these numbers, uh, if we deleted at X cost, that show in the way, uh, where do we see what it will be replaced with at X cost for that savings of X dollars? That information is not here.
Right.
Right? So I think it's a little misleading that if we say, okay, we're going to, okay, do this, do this, do this, and we're gonna have a total net savings of eight million dollars.
Right.
That's not, that, that's not reality.
No, I agree, and, and to give a little background, this, this spreadsheet which had the four columns, yeah, the larger of the two, with the, it had three columns containing red items, this is our, this is the team, the PMC, Tom Staff, W R N S, trying to get their arms around what was bid, and there were some bid alternates that were proposed by the contractors for cost savings.
Uh-huh.
It's also some suggestions that were made by MAC five, and even some that we've pulled from industry and what we've been observing. So this, this by no means is a, is a refined document, it doesn't show the whole picture, it just gives rough order of magnitude sense of where we might find some savings, and, and it allows you to kind of focus in on those big ticket items and really kind of discern how you drive the project. That, so that, that's all to say that this information was never enough, right, it was never enough for us to make informed decisions about, and so what we wanna drive into tonight is actually this, which starts to build those scenarios, right, and what are the impacts of making a decision, in terms of what can we save, what do we have to make other concessions on, or where, where does that value extend, what do we replace it with?
And John, what you're saying, what she's saying is, is that this doesn't have any numbers attached to it.
Correct, and so MAC five right now is working on a reconciled version of the estimates that were done by the two contractors bidding, uh, as well as these options that we've been building with them to kind of build those scenarios, so they have something to estimate to, and so that's, that's actually what they're focused on right now, and we've been, to Elizabeth's credit, and Rick, and several other members as well, we've been working with the PMC and, and council members as well with that group to kind of refine this list, so this isn't a first take on it by any means, it's been some degrees vetted.
And it can be refined, and that's why I was going to counsel, the whole council, to kind of really take a look at and say, yeah, well, I understand this, and I think this is reasonable, or whatever, kind of refine it even more.
Right, and so in, in many ways, we wanted to be very clear, um, in terms of our input and direction, we, we tend to lean towards this recommended balanced option, just because I think it brings value but also maintains the, the spirit of the project thus far designed. Um, so just keep that in mind, and what we've done to make this easier for everyone is tried to highlight pros and cons associated with each option, and, and those are listed in either green for a pro, um, the neutrals are in black, and then the red would be something that we see as a detriment.
John, Paul's here from MAC five, he wants to address the cost issues, right, they have the work in progress, if anybody has any question, Paul Beers here too.
Paul, I think, Paul, you're the one that did page twenty-seven.
That was done in collaboration with W R N S, it was, the first column was what we've gotten from the contractors.
Let you come up, please.
Page twenty-seven is only got one column of numbers that says MAC five evaluation.
That's right, so what we've tried to do with, uh, page twenty-seven is distill this down to what are we proposing without as much speculation and sort of subtle differences between the columns, trying to not confuse too many people with too many options. So we started with the multi-column, the first column being what we knew from the contractors, what they've given us, and then the second two columns were how far do we dig, the first column, or the second column in this case, how many things can we address the fit and finish of the project without taking program area away, and then the last column was adding, how much program area do we need to take away to meet the budget goals that you set for us?
And to qualify on that program, meaning square footage, as it directly applies to a use.
Right, and so the, the latter, uh, single column is a, a distillation of all of that to simplify it, and we've added a number of other items that have come out of our dialogues about how close to the, the bottom line are we, here's some other things that we could add to it that would help get us closer to the budget.
So, page twenty-seven seems to be a summary of reductions, accumulation of page seventeen that you're more focused on, is that?
Yes.
But it's still a lot, right?
Correct, correct, and some of these numbers are.
That's the key, I, I don't want that to go unappreciated, okay? We can look at a big number here and say.
We appreciate it.
Okay.
We're not ready, we're not ready to argue, I'm just, we're trying to figure out the lay of the land, you have to trust me. As much as I'm sure we all, is she on your side? Go ahead. She'll surely answer that question.
Yeah, so, and, and as, um.
Please, I'm sorry.
As John alluded to, it's a, a moving target, MAC five is working on taking the, the bid numbers, we've gone back to most of the subcontractors that bid on it and are trying to get, why did your number end up where it was, what were the market conditions, what were there in the drawings that you saw that spiked it, what have you, and so we're refining those numbers, at the same time we're sort of trying to fill in the blanks or adjust the numbers on this one, uh, sheet, page twenty-seven.
Perfect, great. So, I have a question on, the question is, this is a big, uh, item on the agenda, and I understand there are three different components to this item. One is, uh, looking at the specifics in terms of the engineering value assessments for the library, and giving some direction to staff around the library. Another is to talk about this issue of, um, demolishing the current building, and the third is to talk about general funding for the project, right? Those are three totally different things.
I, I think of course, I heard some discussing, uh, whether we're reconsidering the three A or three B, or the one D or whatever it says, you got?
That's right, yeah, which I'm surprised about because I thought we had decided on three D.
You asked for clarity between those two numbers.
Um, and, okay, so that, that's the question, then the statement is, we're proceeding based on looking at the expenses and what the items are that are gonna cost us money to build this library, and we have to look, and, and there's some assumption about a budget here, right, which I believe was stated to be sixteen million dollars.
Plus escalation, yeah.
Okay, so, that's a problem, because it's the wrong number, and over the last few days, we, we've looked at what numbers we have, we currently have twelve point six million dollars in the bank, uh, if this takes until December and it gets bid, then, I'm not sure exactly when construction's gonna start, sometime in the spring, so it's very likely that it will go through the twenty twenty-one fiscal year, or use, eat into the twenty twenty-one, or twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year, and the life, the, the Atherton is currently incurring one point four million dollars a year of excess taxes that aren't used in our operation, so when you add four years' worth of those taxes, uh, plus the twelve point six million, you have eighteen point two million dollars. In addition, and there's an agenda item that will come up tonight, uh, to approve an amendment to the J P A, a restatement of the J P A, uh, Atherton's library, and I'm just talking about the library here, gets right now, uh, one point four million dollars more of tax revenue than it spends, and as, when we build this library, if we need to eat up some of that future tax revenue, that will be eating up what has been and will be future donor funds or excess tax revenue. So in fact, what we should be looking at is not cutting to the bear's, like, we should be looking at building the right library for this city and the, uh, users of the library, which is frankly more than just Atherton, because we have quite a large support community around Atherton that uses the library. So I think that's really important as we approach each of these items, that we not be trying to cut to the bone, because unlike the civic center, there is revenue that's gonna be coming into the library, personally, I'm not interested in eating up revenue way into the future, because that's revenue that wouldn't otherwise be available to the library system, but, and we'll discuss that when we get to this agenda item, but I think as we walk through this, we need to think about what's the best thing for the library, not what's the cheapest thing.
I agree.
You guys don't need to help. I got a book in.
But can I just add?
That was a question.
That was a question.
Yeah, okay.
That was a statement. I'm just teasing. If we could, we'll, we'll truly get your input, I, I think that that's not gonna be nice, it's gonna be, if you guys have anything else that these guys haven't covered, if you'd like to continue.
Well, we can dive into the items if that.
If we could, I would, I think we all agree with just the lay of the land, and I think we all understand, eighteen point two million dollars, but I think we all have a thing to.
I thought it was very helpful the way Rick, Frank, it'd be great to take like bite-sized one, you know, one of those issues at a time, and work it through.
Yeah, absolutely. No, Jake.
I don't really want the financial implications.
But I think we don't really know what the financial implication, I think that's the variable that they're telling us, even though there's chart sitting in front of us, we hear the budget is actually slightly increased because you actually based off sixteen million tax.
Well, you can decide what don't wanna go in one direction, and we can ask them to give us the, uh, the net cost impacts of, of going in another direction, if there's two options, we can ask for the options.
Absolutely. Mike, your question?
Well, yeah, Mike, I think it'd help for me just to, you know, understand, with Rick's association, I'd love to know, uh, whoever out here can answer the question, what is the answer to that, you know, what, what dollar figures can we count on that's actually gonna be in our, in our wallet at the time we have to pay for it?
So when the town, when the town looks at cash flows spreadsheet, yeah, the cash flow spreadsheet, that's the eighteen point two million dollars that Rick is talking about. We projected out several years, we projected what we're gonna have in the bank now for the library J P A funds, both with accounting holes and with account holes, and what the surplus revenue was over the course of the project, that totaled up to about eighteen point two in potential revenue for the library. What Rick is suggesting is that that could be the budget of sixteen million, eighteen point two million in terms of a target budget.
It sounds like what that's predicated upon is not completing the library until sometime after June of two thousand twenty-one, is that correct?
Which is get current.
Not opening the library.
About opening the library.
Okay.
That was the concept.
The trigger is open in the library.
Yeah, sure, I'm just, just in, in a form of a question, I know Carol's the mayor, Carol, I know you're on the J P A, does that sound, not that Rick would misrepresent, but you're part of, that's, okay.
Yes.
It's important to know, recent history tells us, you still won't know the cost until the bid goes out and comes back, so it doesn't matter what the, what the budget is, until you get a bid, you can plan for that, and you don't wanna be back where you were once before, where you planned for eighteen point two, and it comes in at twenty-one.
Bill, I, I don't think that this council is any more aware today after the bid process that we never know, we wouldn't be anticipating, we're using, I'm sure that's a gauge, we completely understand its market.
I do have a personal question. So if we assume eighteen point two is, is a good number, in the past we've had, I believe, a ten percent contingency built in, is that?
That is what in our practice. That's what's actually being talked about here, the sixteen, sixteen million dollar number, is they're backing that back down for the natural target for the building, it's around fourteen, fourteen and a half.
Well, coming back to, if eighteen point two is the number, you take, and A, we have to talk about whether ten percent is right, because obviously you can't, that's seventy percent, but we, we, we'll go ahead and go into a higher number to build in a little, a little more cushion, so if we did that, I guess we should have some talk about.
did that, I guess we should have some talk about what the target number is.
No, 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 you're right. But the reason that I've said eighteen point two rather than sixteen, and with the additional two million being the contingency, and this is where George, George stopped short, but where he was going, is because we know there's this additional excess taxes coming into the library after June twenty-two, that in fact, our contingency can be covered by the future amount coming into the library, and we could be using it before we engage in a tax leg on the, uh, on the excess taxes. So in fact, the library situation is quite a bit different than the Civic Center because we have this-
Annual reserves.
But we don't really have to, uh, worry about the contingency in the funds as of a certain date, because we know this additional revenue is coming in. That's a big deal.
And the end of, and we believe that the library JPA will accommodate us in that future funding source to complete the library at the level, and the county library JPA wants to have this library completed for the future of our residents, not only of Atherton, but of the county, that, I mean, I think we service another sixteen, twenty thousand residents over and above Atherton.
Uh, just because you guys rattle my brain a little bit, it sounds as if you just said eighteen million dollars is to two thousand twenty-one, but we have the ability-
This will to twenty-one, twenty-two.
Twenty-one, twenty-two. But we have the ability to utilize Atherton donor funds beyond that date to complete the project. So let's say hypothetically, we choose not because of the cost to do a deck that costs two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but we choose to do it after the date, we could utilize donor fund components at a rate of a hundred percent to contribute to the deck, to pay off the debt. Does that sound?
Yeah, that's exactly right. Now, I, I, I think-
That sounds, I'm not here, I'm not, you're not, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the audience and as long as I get the bottom, nothing gets you, it's confirmation. Thank you for that. Okay, we're ready. No, Bill, sure, I know you've been saying this part. Any questions for staff at this point?
As we're looking at that, and I appreciate you bringing up the eighteen-two and then the add-on things afterwards, which would be great. But as long as our spending up to the eighteen-two does not require us to go out and take a loan or a COP, so it does not, so as long as the, our spending is in accordance with our, and I'd like to have that verified over time with, with Robert, that, that we will be looking at the cash flow, because that's an important aspect too. And so, you know, as long as we're building and getting invoiced in accordance with the payment schedule that we're getting, that's fine, and if we delay add-ons, that's great too. I mean, if we can set things up so that we can add them in later very, very easily and achieve a lot of what we originally thought we were to do, I think that that's a very positive thing. Without doing anything which many of the public believes is somewhat underhanded by going with a COP or saying, hey, we can, we can go get a loan without your approval. So, because the input I'm getting from many of people in the public is that they believe that that is, is not appropriate.
Okay. And I know there was a question somewhere.
I asked the question about the cash flow.
Cash flow. I just want to clarify a question because, is there any restriction on what we, if what we don't finish as we're moving through this? If it is a debt, if it's a heating system, or if it's something, is there any limitation on what we can spend that money? Any restrictive nature that the library JPA? Library purpose. Loans as library purposes, so if it was identified in the project component, it would be considered library purposes, okay?
That's absolutely correct, but there was a question there about cash flow. And that is, that is a challenge, as you know, in that cash flow spreadsheet, and the library funding was not new to that, in terms of the way it cycles through in terms of revenue, the town's revenue stream. In this scenario, we can certainly talk to the county, very much like we talked to them about the Bayfront Canal project, about we're not borrowing the money per se, or loaning the money, we are, they're going to get, they're going to take our surplus revenue here for the next two years, or the next year, or whatever it is, and where they use it in advance.
Okay. And that's a discussion you can-
And we need to, so, I'm with the mayor.
Rick, is there a question?
I'd like to ask a policy question.
Oh. On the table, policy question.
Okay. About the design of the library, and the value engineering of the library, and the cuts, the deep cuts, the shortcuts, the small cuts, or no cuts. But from the council, if we had a policy decision that we want to revalue the library structure and fix, fix, finishes and fixtures, finch, such that it's reasonable and that we're saving money, and that we give direction to the architects to do that, but to keep the same look and feel and quality that the library JPA and the county and what we have already designed, would that kind of streamline our process a little bit?
I think you run into a problem because right now, I think that it's what we want. It's the dream.
Yeah.
And I think the quality isn't what we can't afford, and I think that's why we're at this table.
No, but some of this stuff, it is not really my dream, but it's like over the top, but, you know, yeah.
Oh, it's beautiful.
I think, okay.
But I don't know if you made it a policy perspective, one of the budgets considered.
I'm ready with John, John, go.
No, no, please, go. Let's, uh, but again, it's, please, sorry, the process, sure, but I still have some bite sense, but I'm still confused about timing. If, are we, when are we going to talk about three A versus three B to be done? I'm confused about that. If we're talking about that-
The council asked for clarity between options three A and three B in terms of cost. That's provided in the staff reports. There's a section related to it. You have that in the staff report.
I would like, I have a question for you, but I found the timing references in there confusing. Three B, it was, it was five to six months, as I understood it. Three A referred to four months for each, but does that, four months or eight months?
For each. So three, three B.
Do you just get my point? You can do it.
I do.
So I don't know whether that's actually shorter or longer, is sort of my question.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. So it is, sorry, mayor and council. So it is four plus four.
Eight.
So it's eight. Yeah, so I apologize for that being confusing.
Or that four plus four is if they are designed separately, or if they're-
Separately.
Yeah, sequentially. So the idea is that you do one, you finish that, and then you do the other.
Yeah, separately, designed separately.
I understand, you're not going to go through that, but that's compared or consecutive.
Sorry, it's three.
The key was to try to get it done by the end of the year, which was the target, and the only way to do that is to split it out, and just to do, to do one building at a time.
Okay. Any other questions for Paulie, when she's standing up?
That's, that's, that's not, that's not right. I don't think what you just said-
We're operating under three B presently, while we're bidding them both at the same time, right?
I see. No, I was talking about three A, sorry.
Yeah. Right.
And we can't, can't get it done by the end of the year, doing three A.
Correct.
Correct, doing two, correct.
Gotcha, because that's eight months.
Sorry, sorry, Elizabeth.
Let's just stay here.
Okay.
We got it.
All right. No, it's important, makes a difference. Mike, any other little questions there? Or big little ones?
I do have a question, it's a worry. We've been operating here with this ten percent contingency, and you still feel like that's an appropriate amount, given that we are so far off with the last bid cycle, or should we boost that number up or something?
I believe it's appropriate. I don't know, Paul, do you want to weigh in on that?
Sure. Part of our strategy in the next round is to open the bidding, and we think that that's going to bring that spike of lack of competition down dramatically. So tightening up the contingency.
Okay, just to be, so my understanding is that if you put these two together and you have approximately forty million dollars, we have approximately ten percent as what I would call a contingency, so we're really designing something, we have approximately thirty-six million dollar target, figuring, you know, that gave us a little fat in case something went wrong. My question is, is that ten percent contingency still an appropriate level, or are we, are we, have we lost some confidence and maybe we should make that fifteen or twenty percent?
At this point, I don't think we have a clear answer. We need to get a better scope for what the next phase will be. And to be clear, there's a number of different contingencies that we're addressing in the project. Some of them are soft costs and some of them are hard costs. So all along, we've had a contingency for the unforeseen that wasn't tied directly to the construction cost.
Is that the ten percent that I remember, or is that surplus?
Yes, that's the ten percent.
Thank you.
Nick, Paul?
Yeah.
Any other questions, please?
All right. So what we've done is bracketed, like I said, these items as they relate to one another. So you'll find, for instance, on the first page here, we have exterior assemblies and superstructure, because in the case of the base bid design, the rammed earth construction walls that were stabilized are doing both. And so just keep that in mind as we talk, some of these items on the page will correlate with one another pretty, pretty directly. So that being said, I'm going to dive right in. The rammed earth walls, this is actually a big item in terms of look and feel for the building. This is representative of the inside of the building, the outside of the building. It plays a large potential in the way that the, the building is structured. It's what keeps it column-free in terms of an interior space. And it's what is really what, probably the most expressive material on the building. I think it's, it's a big signifier of identity for this in terms of the design. The base bid option, or the bare bones option, the second column from the left there, would, would be to look at a cement plaster system, which is very similar to what we've been detailing for the city hall building, not so dissimilar from the plaster finish that we have on this existing town hall building that we're in right now as well. So there is some context there. It's not by any means remote or out of the place in Atherton here. One thing to remember, though, is that that design of a wall, that'd be a stick-built wall, so we would need to introduce structure to the building, steel columns. So it's a different use of the space, it'll be a little less flexible, and we'll have to contend with some columns in the space. So just keep that in mind, there is additional costs in there. So this is one of those where we're talking about, what is the change to a structural system design, whether we clad those columns, whether we paint those columns, those are the kind of variables we have to look at as we move forward if we make a decision to go, for instance, in the case of this, a cement plaster plus steel structure.
Another question. As I was going through your options, you have the R values of each of your ideas here, and I don't really see that the R values are consistent with the Cal Green standards for Region Three, Climate Area Three, they're substantially higher.
Well, so there's-
So, so, excuse me, so, you know, I would hope that, I'm not saying I want to go as low as you can go, but, you know, when we're doing bare bones, it says, those are the words up there, bare bones, we're doing it as cheaply as possible. That would, that's exactly what it means. So we then have an understanding of where we can go, and then we have an idea of then, from there, once we get some numbers, of how we can add things back in based on our priorities and achieving the same things that I think all of us, including yourselves, want to achieve. I mean, we want to have the most energy efficient, but let's make sure we have the full thing, because, you know, I did spend a time looking up the Cal, all the Cal Green standards, and some of your numbers weren't bare bones, I guess I would like to point out.
Yeah, that's a good point. Cal, so Cal Green is one system that we're held to with the design of the building. Actually, the more stringent requirements that we find under the code are under Title twenty-four and the energy requirements. And so, that being said, there's trade-offs all around. We're not designing two minimums necessarily on one wall system, we're looking at the full building envelope performance. And if we were to optimize one area and not another, that doesn't necessarily bring us a good building. In fact, that can make the building perform a lot worse in terms of condensation and thermal break. So, that being said, I think it's a fair comment. We could strip this down all the way, but what we did is we looked at the assembly, and we said, well, what do we have in terms of thickness and what just makes sense? And it's a pretty nominal add to throw some mineral wool, that insulation, within a cavity of your cement plaster system or within the stud wall construction. So this tries to kind of still look at the assembly and say, well, what's the right and reasonable fit here? You're right, you could strip this down even furthermore, in some cases beyond what we would feel comfortable with in terms of an overall envelope.
I just was commenting, because you called it bare bones.
Right. The other factor, and this, this is a big deal with the library, and we'll hear it again here shortly, the acoustics are a big deal. So thermal performance, daylighting, and acoustics are really drivers for how the library is going to function. And putting something in that wall, right, actually makes a big difference in terms of how it performs acoustically. If we just ran a stud wall up with plaster on the outside and very minimal insulation, you probably feel and hear that train moving by, and I don't think the library or any of the patrons would really find that to be an advantageous use of the space.
Please, but what I think for the council to know is, because their direction was make the library a Cal Green facility at the base bid, where do each of these columns go beyond that and why? Where's the wall?
Right. There are some pretty specific items that we've pulled out, it's on the last page of this, and with respect to Cal Green requirements in particular. I didn't pull specific thermal minimums like you're referencing, Bill, but that is something that we can pull if you, if you wanted to see that, you know, on a comparative chart, that's something we could do. But again, I think the Title twenty-four is actually probably the more difficult stringent requirements for us to meet.
I think that direction from the council was really Cal Green, what are the legal requirements?
Right.
And I think Cal Green became a shorthand for that, so if there's a Title twenty-four, that's actually a mandate, you know, we're going to do that.
Right.
Rick, would you want to note that?
Sure.
Exactly, other than the whole.
Yeah, it would be nice to know which columns are exceeding what you, because we're assuming that they all, let's just say the bare bones is minimum requirement. And if it exceeds it, then it'd be nice to know.
Yeah, to the best of where it can be very explicitly pulled out, that would be something we could provide. Like I was saying, some of these do dovetail together, so it's going to be a more holistic building reading of that interpretation. When it's performative, that, that's just something to keep in mind, but we can qualify that.
I would hate to see the RNS spend a lot of time optimizing everyone and telling us exactly what it is, when I think that there's some broad things that we should go over when they get to those points, and then make some, make some major decisions, and then they can go do that as part of the redesign, as opposed to have them go do much of clerical work. Now, I just wanted to point out, though, that your numbers were, give you some questions, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Better job, thanks. As quick as you can move.
Yeah, I'll keep moving. So the recommended option in lieu of cement plaster for those rammed earth walls is actually a very similar construction, just looking at whether we would do a single or a double-wife poured concrete wall. You can get finishing concrete that's actually pretty adorable in terms of its texture and color, and it has a lot of the benefits as well from the thermal perspective, the acoustic perspective, and also in terms of being a really low maintenance material finish. Also, I think the main thing here is just to remind that that is something that serves both structurally and as a finish. And so I think a wall that does double duty like that does bring a level of advantage to the project. I'm going to move to the secondary walls and just to point out on the plan-
Can we go over the last one?
Yeah, I don't care, it's the third one.
Three and four?
Yeah, you've got number two, I think we would go, you know, if, if approved, we would go do three, and then, and then you're saying you could add column four to three, and it would improve it, if we had the money. I want to understand how to read this.
So the, the pricing alternate is a double-wife wall, which is consistent with the current design in the rammed earth construction as well. So double wife, meaning that you have a layer on the exterior and a layer on the interior, and then that's filled with insulation. So it's, it's two pores.
So would that go, because this is an alternate, after it's built, we're going to come back and do this?
Not necessarily. So the, the far right column-
I misunderstood when you were talking about this.
Could be deferred oral alternate, yeah. And in this case, it would be an alternate.
Okay. I don't understand that at all. What do you mean?
So, no, no, let me, let me clarify.
Is this a structural wall?
Yes.
So you're proposing to do half the wall now and half the wall?
No, no. I'll clarify. We initially listed the fourth column only as pricing alternates, but there was some points that came up in the PMC, and I think well-stated, that there are some portions of this building we could do later. Can we combine the option of either deferred items or things that we'd like alternate pricing on and put that on the far right column? So in the case, there is no way we would defer structurally a portion of the wall. What we're talking about in this column right now on the far right is an alternate, a pricing alternate.
Okay. And what, what, so we need to know, what I'd like to know is the difference in savings from what we currently have if we were to go with column three versus column four?
Right. I think, and, and we'd like to know that as well.
And it sounds like column three is thicker-
Right.
But column four is two separate pores with insulation in between them.
Correct. And that's, that's potentially where the value may be, in that you have one subcontractor who would go and do the item in the far right. And that's what we were curious about, is if we had a concrete contractor come out and pour a double-wife wall in lieu of having someone come out and pour one wife, and then we have somebody come back in and do all this structural work and some, some infill wall. Now granted, we're going to have some infill wall anyway. Now granted, we're gonna have some infill wall anyway on the interior, but when we looked at that, we said, you know, there may still be some savings here, let's hold that as an alternate.
So, is the, is the wall on the right structurally stronger?
Um, not necessarily, no. I mean, I think we would design-
Why is it preferable?
You get more soundproofing, you get, um, yeah, yeah, it's more soundproofing-
Because the insulation in between the two concrete pores would be more insulation, more sound insulating than just solid concrete.
We can put a more efficient insulation in that cavity between two concrete walls than we could within a built-up stick wall on the interior.
So I'd say we wanna know the pricing on those.
Yeah, definitely.
What I, I'm gonna interject here, and I'm gonna try to break it up a little bit, just because this is gonna be a pretty drill-down process, it sounds like. And I think I have a few members, there's the librarian, anybody that really wants to talk specifically related to the library can find that we could hear your input, because as we start going through these things, if there's something that is of value of importance that somebody in the audience might recognize, then we can keep our attentions, if we, we can keep our attention on that maybe subject matter as we drill into the component, if there's an interest, unless everybody in the audience really wants to hear absolutely every detail of this, not that I would assume you would, but, um, Carol, I don't know if you're interested in the drill-down detail, but I'd love to hear yours.
Mr. Mayor, we're actually much more interested in the JPA amendment item.
Perfect. And, you know, I, I will say this, once I moved eighteen, I go, oh, she just wants to hear about the library, the JPA, my bad, I'm just trying to facilitate some speediness. Anybody else related to item, this item that-
Can I ask a question?
See, this is why you need to do this. Yes?
John, could you kind of explain to us why you originally set down the rammed earth construction?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because I think that's kind of so exotic, and we don't understand, and, you know, what's, what's the deal? And why is it so expensive compared to all the rest of these, uh, you know, alternatives? And, you know, i- is, is it just because you thought that, you know, this is gonna be really cool, or what?
No, no, I mean, I think rammed earth, it's, you're right, there aren't a lot of buildings in this area particularly that you would immediately say, oh yeah, it's a rammed earth building, I'm familiar with that. So in that regard, it is somewhat exotic, uh, but there's a lot of benefits to it, um, when you think about it. So the rammed earth, you, just the nature of the material in general, we've always held to a very natural palette, which I think is appropriate for this site, right in the woods. Um, and the rammed earth is, is just that, so it's sourced from the, from the minimal concrete. Um, and because of that, its carbon footprint is incredibly low, and this is something that architects didn't chart this in the past, they do more, um, they're more forthright in terms of reviewing that now, because it's a real issue, uh, in one way or another.
So is it fifty percent upcharge, a hundred percent, or is it, you know?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's difficult to qualify, it's definitely, there's an upcharge because of the labor. You would pour a concrete wall and vibrate it, right, to get an adequate settling of that within the formwork. With the rammed earth, what they're doing is they're actually bringing it onto site, installing it into a formwork, but they're tamping it now, and they're creating that pressure manually. So there's more labor.
Can I also add something? Yeah. I, I, I'm not rushing to-
Mike, please. Just a, I'm sorry.
Well, she just went, um-
I would like to, are we done with the rammed earth?
No, I just, I just, just two seconds, I promise. Just because your question is about why, and so, as a civic building, you're also looking for permanence, right? So the projects are really looking for materials of permanence, but I just wanted to remind, and I, I know you all know this, but when we went through this, it was on budget, so it wasn't, we didn't come to it thinking, well, let's just see if we can get it in, it was always within budget. If it had not been, we would've started to move to some of the things we're doing now. So I just wanted to-
Right, right.
My question, and I think you may have addressed it at the very beginning, is I go through this list of trade-offs, one of the things that's not being trade-off is square footage. So the assumption is we're keeping all the program space, I heard you say that, at the end of the day, are you recommending any or never? Is there anything in here that talks about a smaller library?
There are, and they're at the very end. Um, so if you go all the way, I think it's on page seven.
Oh.
Towards the top of page seven, there's some area where it's-
That's the second column.
So I, I find this difficult, this way, without the numbers, it's really hard to do trade-offs, and how we can intelligently have a conversation about, you know, rammed earth walls versus, or, or square footage, or something where we don't really know what the trade-offs are.
Right.
And that's the job, you guys are in this iterative process with the PMC, whereas before, you would usually let the PMC get to that point and bring it to you to do the trade-offs.
Whose idea was it to bring it to us?
Yeah, because, so, so, so for the PMC, for, for the PMC, we went through each and every one of these, and we weighed, well, if we do this, you know, we're gonna really lose not only value, but efficiency or whatever, so that's why we got to here, and, you know, we really went back and forth with the original, uh, and then some of the things, I think we ended up keeping the original because the trade-offs were, were just not worth it. But, um, you know, like the teak frame windows, well, we, you know, we made substantial cuts on that. So going through every, every one of these, I mean, two or three hours, okay, so, uh, but if you, if you, that's why I was wanting to kind of get to a policy that, you know, if you kind of feel that we're gonna take to a, a, a lower number, a more, um, usual budget, taking out things that will not compromise the, the, the functionality of the library or the, what the JPA wants, you know, and then come to some numbers to bring back to council, I think that's really a more efficient use of the reason.
If I can interject on the numbers. Um, page twenty-seven, which is the distilled list, which is the most current information we have on what these things are gonna cost. Initially, we just had some wags from the, the general contractors. As this list evolves, we've gotten a little more definition, so that it's easier to price it more accurately. But if you take the bare bones column as it is now, we feel that we're about two million dollars shy of our goal.
Of which goal?
The sixteen million dollar library.
No, you came in late.
The goal was eighteen million, and you're not sure.
No, that's wrong, that's right. We can change that.
Yeah, you, you came in late, because we've already talked about that, yeah. And, but I just want to clarify your, uh, the one column number that you've come down to the normal savings, this, this thing right here, right? That does not have net numbers.
No, that's right.
Those are not net numbers. Okay?
Again, it's a work in progress, and as the estimator said, rammed earth, we can deduct this much, and then the design team came back and said, but we need to add some structural steel back into that. So, that's why the iterative-
So, the number you came up with, you said we're about two million dollars off, what number is, what is that? 'Cause I, I thought I heard at the beginning, we don't have numbers yet, we're not able to have this conversation, and now we're, and now suddenly we're two million dollars off.
That's page twenty-seven. That's page twenty-seven.
Why? Okay, good point. I mean, it doesn't answer my question, I was, do, do we really have numbers, or do we not really have numbers that we could make trade-offs?
We don't, not yet.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're using the, the wag numbers as, to identify the big ticket items that you can start to keep with some value in here.
But it looks like these numbers came from the bid, from MAC five, WRNS, I didn't put into it, so I think that these are better than just wag numbers. You can put some thought into them, and I think that it would've been worthwhile, understanding that they're not complete and you haven't done that, I think it would be worthwhile if we could've actually taken some of these numbers and propagated it through here, so we would understand a little bit better. So if, if, next time we do a presentation like that, I'd rather have some numbers than no numbers, and be going back and forth between stuff, and, and, you know, have WRNS sit up there and talk about stuff, and say, well, we, you know, this is, this is smart for us to do, but we don't know if it is or not.
Unfortunately, this iterative process, the ink's still drying on some of their ideas while we're trying to throw numbers out.
Yeah, it's, I think, well, I just have other people, the others, I'd love to hear from, from Francisco, actually, to, to hear if you got any thoughts about trade-offs you would like the CS make or direction that you'd like the CS make in terms of square footage versus quality of finishes or whatever.
Well, I, I apologize, but I don't really have an opinion. I mean, we're, we're here to support and kind of hear out what the council has to say. Obviously, we would love to have the library with as much square footage as possible, I mean, renovating this chamber itself would be great, because this is a space we would use for lots of the programs to happen, um, I am, you know, but understandably, we have to see what the realities are today. Um, we're, we will make it work in, in, however it comes together, but, um, you know, like you guys were very invested in the best building possible with the funds we have. And we join the meetings weekly, and, and we're sit there, and we listen, and we take notes, and we're, we're very diligent about what the changes are, and, but we really don't have an opinion.
Thank you, Francisco. All right. Um, yeah, this is, uh, I think that we're in this, uh, rule of the limit here, where it's a work in progress, and, you know, starting from a bare bones column, and it's, and, and you'll say, we kind of now don't believe that's bare bones, uh, it's kind of somewhere in between, maybe the first one's maybe better, it's kind of hard to believe. And, and it's hard to pinpoint, if we converted MAC five's valuation on page twenty-seven and inverted it into our decision-making, you can see where those numbers may be applicable. Um, right now, I'm literally going from this to look where it applies to this in the page, and I think that it's gonna do this room an injustice for me to try to invert, please.
Can I make a suggestion?
I would love to hear a suggestion from you.
The, the council's struggling with this iterative process, totally recognize that, appreciate it. Maybe the PMC can do some more work to get to a point that the council wants to inject itself as a body, where there's definitive numbers, um, that MAC five is, you know, valuing it down a little bit for us, but maybe tonight, you can focus on the exterior, interior fits and finishes, as Councilman Lewis was talking about, the teak windows, the decks, the square footage, the bigger issues that are on that value sheet that really impact the library itself, not really the mechanical component of it. Those sorts of things are, kind of affect other systems in the library.
Then why don't, John, why don't we focus on those? Let's move in the direction where we're looking at the items that we see exact numbers for, especially in page seventeen, and now, let's revert also MAC five's numbers on page twenty-seven. And where are the objects, and items identified similar to a desk, furniture, et cetera, et cetera, where it flies into the project, please?
Sure. I'm gonna, um, I'm gonna continue, if that makes sense, I'll continue to navigate down here, and I'll just pull out the larger items. So we have talked about structure already, uh, in that it, that ties in directly with the exterior envelope, so stock, uh, stocko system would be a steel-framed structure, uh, whereas the concrete would in fact be that structural system. Um, and with respect to the exterior windows, so Elizabeth, you mentioned the previous design, which was a teak with a framed window, um, and that was on the north elevation, which is the large, uh, front of the library would be situated right to my left here, and that had the upperability out to the deck. Uh, there was also a larger window system on the south side of the building, and these were tall stands, so that actually necessitated a curtain wall system, um, for those larger openings, where we had smaller openings on the, what, the, the west elevation, so facing the redwoods, and some of those were smaller systems. And so what we've looked at are two options here, uh, in a reduced cost system as a aluminum storefront and aluminum curtain wall, and those are the two options we're looking at for those larger context windows. Um, now that being said, these are, these would be painted, uh, and so what we would look for is, for some consistency in the material finish, is that the painted aluminum framing of this window system would also match the painted aluminum spandrel or coping that we would have atop that wall as well, so we're, we're trying to keep that palette again pretty neutral and consistent.
And reducing the number of French doors?
Correct, yeah, and so, two options there. Um, the first option under bare bones would be to simply not provide those doors, uh, and in that instance, we wouldn't even provide the deck, right? That's a redesign of that whole front entry sequence to essentially be landscape. Uh, and so you would find some cost savings there. Now, granted, we're gonna have to deal with that relationship to ground, because the building, as you know, does sit higher, just like this building does too.
How many other decks are there?
Well, there's, so there's a front deck, which is probably the most important deck. Um, that's our welcome mat for the building, the front porch, um, and connecting to the building we're in now, the historic town hall. There is a back deck, which I think has a, a next priority in terms of an external reading connection to that, uh, redwood grove off the back of the building, and that's connected to the adult quiet reading room. So actually, I think there's a good connection to an interior program, exterior relationship there. I think that would be really well used. The two other decks you're referring to, uh, one is the maker deck, and that ties in directly with the inside-outside use of that maker space, that's right next door to the digital lab. And then finally, there is a staff deck, and this is based off the connection that would be made towards the back end of the building over off of Maple. Uh, that deck just connects into the actual staff break room there. Uh, deliveries would also occur at that location for the building.
But you're talking about eliminating those decks.
Right.
Not, not the big deck.
Not the front deck.
Not the front deck.
Well, no, that's one of the proposals, to eliminate the front deck. That's one of the proposals, doesn't mean we have to-
But if he's asking for our input, I think- Would it be cost-effective, with all the decks, to eliminate them today, put in whatever we need to in terms of a ramp or some, some kind of, with an eye towards in a year or two, or whenever we got the funding, to then build it?
I, it's a good point, this is one we kicked around as well. I think the front deck, there's a couple things to be aware of with that deck. It's, it's the best deck of all the decks on the project. It doesn't mean that it doesn't come without challenges, though. If we were to defer the renovation of this building, we would need to make sure that the detailing and design of that front deck, assuming we built it right out of the gate, would be modular and that we could remove portions of that deck to come back in and do this work. So we wanna be aware of that, we wanna make sure that's really clear to everyone. If we were to not build that deck, you could defer it till after the town hall. Granted, I do think it has a, a big programmatic impact on the way you would use the library and use this building.
And isn't there a significant savings just changing the materials?
Right.
There is that also, which is another alternative. So right now, the, the deck wood material, the decking material is garapa, which is probably the most cost-effective hardwood, exotic hardwood that we could find, um, least maintenance in terms of your staff, you don't have to treat it as often, you wouldn't have to coat it, and it, it has a lot less movement, splintering, um, and warping over time than a softer wood would. Um, we do have an abundance of redwood in this area, and cedar is also a more residential application for a deck, you would find some cost savings there, um, but we do wanna be really clear, to make the switch to a redwood or cedar material deck, is it gonna rely on more maintenance? It will definitely over time splinter because of the higher use not being a residential application, so-
Is there any comments, Harry? Please.
So, unlike with the admin and the police building, where we might defer some in the future because we don't have the funds now, in this case, it makes no sense to do that because we can just borrow against the future funds. We know we've got them, and if we do that, we use one hundred percent of the don't, of the, um-
Excess.
Of the excess taxes. So, I think in this case, we should go with the things that we think are really important for this building, and personally, I would say the front deck and probably the back deck fit into that category.
I agree with the front deck, I, I think the other ones could be added, but I agree with the other front deck, and there's, if we went through the picture and talked about
And as I said, if we went through the picture and talked about what we, what we really think is very, very important. I think if we could provide valuable facts of the RNS of what we're really considering, and then, you know, you could spend a few minutes going through your list, know maybe so on some of these other ones. But I thought that the alternative pricing changes where they had the decks in the back, other than the front deck, was, was a good idea. I mean, I, the look and feel of the building is, is these doors that open out. I don't care if they're, I don't care if they're mahogany, you know, I think we should scale that back. But having those windows, those doors open up and having that deck out there, I think creates a great space. And, and really, it's, it's the look and feel that we were looking for.
Yeah, I tend to agree that the front deck is, and I, and I, and a maintenance issue, and it's, it's significant in size. As far as the rear decks are concerned, changing the type of material is not going to influence me, I mean, go to a reduction in materials or, like Rick says, if it's a reduction in materials, at least it's being done. Mike, any idea?
No, I understand, I'm sure I understand Rick's approach, there is a few times I'm not quite getting it, I don't think, I apologize. What I'm hearing you say is, we can actually, our target's not really sixteen or eighteen. It's some, we don't know, it's some larger number.
It, it looks like by the time we are opening library, there will have been eighteen million dollars accumulated. Eighteen point two is what we have now, what we expect to get. But we know going forward, there's going to be some significant dollar amount accumulating each year. And based on the amendment to the JPA, which you'll hear about, once we've opened the library, we will split those excess tax dollars with the library. So assume that we have seven, one point two million dollars of excess, then we'll keep six hundred thousand pound trust fund for library purposes. Six hundred thousand will go to the library. But if we need some of that, but that's after our authorized use of library funds that we split with the library. The, what falls into that authorized use of library funds would be any use for this building that we borrow ahead on from the library or from the county. We say we need to borrow two million dollars, so it costs us twenty million instead of eighteen. Then, then we will essentially owe the library, the county, whoever we borrow it from, or whoever advances it to us, it isn't exactly borrowing. They would get the first two million dollars of the excess tax funds, so that might be a year and a half or two years worth of funds. So unlike with the admin building, there's a pool of money available here and we should, and, and it's going to be more efficient to build this library all at once rather than to build eighty-five percent of it now and expect we're going to add on fifteen percent at some time in the future. We don't, in this case, we don't need to bear that cost and inconvenience, we should just do it now.
Do it promptly.
But that's a fundamental, to me, that's a fundamental.
It is a fundamental.
A fundamental thing. So we should get over that, make sure that we're comfortable doing that for the, for the.
Will we focus on that for this? Yeah, I, I, I would, I, I, I hear what Rick's saying. I guess the concept, it's future donor component that you're, that we're really focusing on, is will it help us make decisions on frankly spending money?
Well, again, the library, the best part of the product, the library, yeah.
And it's our tax money.
All true. But it really, it's still a spending component, and it's future, future components because it is really future that we're spending. So we just need to, you know, I, the concept of using futures, clearly, is some, I don't think we disagree as long as it's the right thing to spend the money on. If that's reasonable, we just have to agree to, if the deck is what we want to spend the money on, then it's an understanding that it most, it could be that we would be using futures, because we really don't know, it could be. Then, is that correct? So if we're targeting.
It's a, for the.
Is there a chance that it's not the case, and we know for a fact that we can do that?
Well, that's what we just got, we're, we have that understanding, and I think that it's been reemphasized. I think it's reasonable that that would occur.
And we get a letter.
And most likely, we'll ask for a letter because we're going to move into item number thirteen, and I would like to stay a few minutes, that's.
It's on the table.
Yeah, it is, isn't it? I, I really do think that Rick does have a fundamental question, how much of futures? We really don't have a basis for what those futures are. It's just target items that we want to focus on, like, for example, the entry large deck, is that okay to say at this point in moving forward and making sure that the quality is of a higher standard than, for example, maybe the rear?
Well, and you know, maybe the maintenance issue is not such a big issue because with our library funds, the, the amount of tax money that is raised from Atherton taxpayers towards the operation of the library, those are maintenance costs that have to come out of that. So, you know, if we have to resurface a cedar deck every year, I mean, we could probably do that. It's not like, you know, maintenance budget from another, so maybe that's not the thing. But what WRS spec in the garapa, and, and I remember when you were doing that in the, in the committee meetings, that was the most reasonable, most durable, most, you know, like safest kind of material for people walking on and, you know, for a public place. So I personally am not ready to throw that out to save, you know, twenty thousand dollars or something like that. Personally. It's not my money, but it's my tax money, and it, it is that, so anyway. I think that's a fundamental concept that we have to really get in our head. And then, maybe if I could make a suggestion there, because this is really going on and on and on. We, we can't get through this item by item. If we could put this on our next study session when we have some numbers to compare, and we'll do it, we'll, we'll finish it up in the next study session.
I would have a tendency of agreeing with you, and I'd like to see that in that page number twenty seven, MAC five's integration into this current spreadsheet.
I think you're going to get new numbers, you're going to get better numbers, these numbers are good indicators.
The suggestion basically is let the PMC and value engineering process continue so we can add numbers to this, let the council can actually look at and make those decisions later.
I think that's reasonable.
Well, I do think you can give some broad direction on looking at this thing of what we were thinking of and what, what we would prioritize, but that's not what anybody wants to do, but that's fine.
I agree with that, just for what, for, I, I agree with the prioritization of those private tech programs spaces where we can't jump it over any of the nice ad finishes or environmental, or anything like that, you know.
That, that kind of stuff's good, good to hear, that's the drift.
And Bill, you have broad direction?
Yeah, I think we, I'd like to keep as much of the space as possible. You know, when I was looking at it with George, I, I thought we should drop the position on one hundred and fifty five square feet that we could take out on the back end and squeeze the library a little bit. I do want to prioritize, I think updating this building and making it seismically safe is, if, if in fact it's not in the core, it's, we've got to be one of the first things that we do, because I think that that's very important. We've done for a long time, but this building here is seismically unsafe, and it does, it's in, it's in sore need of, of improvements.
Well, let me just add to that, because I totally support that. But to, for me, the two big, there's a bunch of big items in here, and the two really big items that are, I think, important to this library are this building as its public purpose space, and, which means opening up this wall and having that deck out there connect the library to this building, that, that is the most dramatic change than, other than tearing down every other building on the site that we're going to be doing in this project, and I would want to see us do that. I mean, we should build something we're going to be really proud of, and we, in this case, we have the money.
Yeah, and, and I guess the last thing is, you know, if there was some suggestions, eliminate the, the quiet room for the adults, I think that that is a big, big mistake. I do not want to see that gone. I'd rather you squeeze some other areas down, but that is an area and, and at least one conference room in the, in the quiet areas. Other, these other conferences are important too. People need the breakout rooms. There are the things in the Menlo Park library, there are the things that are used the absolute most, and, and they're very coveted. So, you know, I do my best to control those and squeeze down some of the other areas a little bit. And I said my piece on at least the front deck, I think we need to maintain the front deck. I don't really care about equipment, I agree with, with Councilwoman Lewis, that, that the maintenance of this is, is going to be part of our operational cost of the library, so it will come out of those costs, but, but, you know, it's a trade off. So I think that those are the key things there, I, I don't care about.
So another, another big ticket item is all the millwork, you know, the built ins, which we, we talked about, and taking that and making it more off the shelf modular things that we can buy, and that's a really big ticket item.
That seems like a easy one.
Does it, can we? Yes, yeah, and that's what we're talking, that's really kind of.
Mind if you, for me, other than the project, uh, program.
No, I wouldn't mind spending a little time on town hall and trying to figure out whether we keep the building versus the rent ability. Is that, that one point, was there only point six million dollars? Are there other costs that we should be aware of?
With the town hall renovation?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, it is a seismic upgrade, and that's a big part of the ticket. The foundations would also be reworked for the building, so that's probably among the most expensive of the costs in the remodel here. In terms of the finishes, the ceiling would come down that we have now, so you would actually get a, a more exposed structure. And then there was the addition, this was another add, was to expand this wing for a future cafe use. And so I think those are the biggest portions of the rework in here. Windows would be replaced, this would be opened up for that deck connection, you're right, that's critical to the story, right, of the library.
Did you guys want to hit the one point six?
Well, I'd have to let Paul qualify that, because I think right now, and this is something I think the pencil's still being sharpened on. If I remember correctly, the number originally we were seeing for eliminating that renovation was only one, two, five from over. And I think that was, we all kind of scratched our head and thought that seemed a little low. And so I think that's one of the numbers you're still building up currently.
Okay, that's a big ticket item, and.
We're going to reconvene on August tenth.
Yeah, so August tenth, that's.
No, we don't have those numbers yet, and you don't want to have this iterative conversation, right?
No, we don't.
I don't know.
What I do, what I really don't want is to see this May and next year, a conversation about. So, so come back on August tenth.
Whatever.
I don't know.
Yeah.
No, no, I also have the.
It's a mayor's call, but I would say come back with whatever you got on August tenth.
Well, you like.
Yeah.
It's going to be work in progress, so we'll put our best available information from MAC five's estimating in this other consultant we bring on board. So we're going to, by August tenth, we're going to provide the best available information at the time, knowing that it's work in progress.
Sounds like a sub.
And, yeah, everybody.
We work, meet me every Wednesday for two hours.
Remember, at the same time this is processing with the volume team for the library, it's ahead of what's going on with the admin and PD.
Right.
So you'll get same sort of conversation around admin and PD. If you want to wait on admin and PD until we have some more better numbers connected to it, we can postpone that part of the conversation, right?
For me, the, the, what happened in opposition to admin and PD earlier. Yeah, part, part of the competition here is we don't know, we're learning, I, like, I learned at this meeting that the, the number's a little different than I thought it was our target number. Yeah. That, that's not to be the case.
No, it's not.
We have a hard decision to make there, so we should. Yeah.
This item is concluded, right? You should have, oh.
Sorry. It's very a lot. I agree with you. So we're going to go ahead and talk about the demolition of the library, please.
Thank you.
Let's talk about demolition.
Well, this is, this is back to the, for Marty, it's, one of the thoughts was, the current library, it's current situation, we've got the temp building over there now, they can move into it, and we can demolish and do some advanced tech work for the bid. Or they could stay where they are and use that as a community room over the summertime until we bid up. Or we could get all the plans ready to do the demo here, and when we're comfortable with the bid set, we can pull the trigger, send that up and then do the demo work. At that point, advanced work for the overall project, to save some time on phasing, because it does also benefit us potentially from phasing.
Right, right. And Mayor, I think Anne Marie does make, from the library, might want to speak to this too, or.
Oh, we just want a place to work, huh?
We were just talking, I was really, we'll go with whatever the council decides, but staff has seen the space. They're excited to move into it, there's a plan to move, move forward. And in many ways, the, the, the portables are much more flexible than the current facility, so we're happy to move, but, whatever the council decides.
Mr. Mayor, as the official wet blanket, you can't find any place in the staff report or in the title that talks about demolition of the library today.
It's part of the volume engineering stuff.
It's not in the title, and it's not in the report, it's not before them tonight.
Well, no feedback required, then.
All right, we won't consider it, yeah, but thank you for your input, we'll take it around.
We'll make sure it properly is amended on August tenth.
Can we wait out until August tenth?
I didn't ask a question, I just can't take any action.
We're not, we're not asking for any action, just some feedback.
All right, just work with the question.
I have a question. So the question is, if in fact we were to do this, obviously, you know, staging and things like that would be going faster and, you know, might have been something to do. And we would be potentially altering the library faster as well, potentially?
Correct.
One month, right?
One month.
One month.
I, well, I, you know.
Thanks for that question. Any other questions related to that topic?
I understand it's on the agenda tonight, so we're going to talk about it, but if you got approval to do this on the tenth, could you be in a position to move forward with it the following week?
Probably not, no, he's got to put together a full big package.
It's a short, big timeframe, but it still has.
Right, I'd first need authorization from the council to put together this big package and then release it, right? And so you can probably do that in one motion, I prefer to turn it on that. And then, because it'll take me maybe a day or two to put that big package together, work with WRS.
But that doesn't preclude the.
What are we talking about, that you're talking about a, a bid to demolish?
Correct.
The move into the new space is totally separate.
That's something.
Okay.
They can do that without permission.
They can do that now.
Yeah, but there's a company in Mountain View, Furma, that we're, we're both on, like, the bidders for Hensel Phelps and, and Alvera. They, they can do it probably in two weeks. They can clean that site in two weeks.
I didn't hear you.
If they like the space and want to move in, they could do that tomorrow, and we could help them facilitate that. But it's the big thing to demolish the old one.
That's a public work.
That's a separate issue, and we'll deal with that on the tenth, or soon as we begin.
I will, I, you should be aware that moving into that, first building that temporary space before we had authority from the voters to build the civic center was a, we got stepped ahead of the voters on that. And I think moving people into that space, we should be aware that we are sending the message that we're going to proceed with the library under any set of circumstances that presumably aren't we? I think that sends a message.
Demolishing the building sends something, sends.
And I think, I think putting up a, several, you know, a large, taking down a park and putting a large temporary structure on it, putting staff in there before we have a plan, you know, to build a new library is a significant step. It's worth, we're talking about for a minute, that sends a message to the.
But we have a plan.
I, I will agree with Mike, that form of demolition would probably, I mean, the moving of bodies is one thing, but the actual demolition's another message, so maybe that's something that we should.
So are we going to wait on the demolition decision until August tenth?
That's why we're waiting until August tenth.
But we have a plan.
We have a plan.
I, I, I don't agree with that.
We, we don't have a plan.
I do not, I do not think you have a plan.
It's, it's worthy of a full conversation.
We're on our way, we're on our way, we're developing a plan.
All right, well, let's move on to general funding, funding compliance, George, we should like to talk about that a little bit.
May I comment on this portion of the meeting? I mean, I put in a request to comment at the public comment, we didn't take them beginning.
Walling, absolutely.
Thank you very much. Get this sheet to.
Yeah, that person's.
This will be short, this is, I'm Walter Slayth from the Lindwood area.
Please.
I spoke at the June council meeting on behalf of the Friends of the Atherton Town Library about the unfortunate position the planning for a new Atherton library has been left. It seemed unclear to me with the three to zero vote to proceed, that is in June, as to just where we were going. I appreciate that you were trying to do what I hear in request. To reiterate, unless I am contradicted by further council action, then my understanding is that the staff was directed to bring back to the council a report which will analyze the downsides as well as any additional cost of a bidding process that allows continuing negotiation of the future responses to a separate library bid request as a standalone project as opposed to it being included with the civic center bid as a whole. This all will be done prior to any council vote to proceed. The town's attorney opined that had not, that, that had not been possible with the previous bidding process, which we have just concluded. The original bid process, which allowed that to happen, was a clear misjudgment in strategy. Five years ago, when a ballot measured to build the library at Holbrook Palmer Park was turned down, very few residents understood the conspiracy at the heart of those who advertise, save our park, to get in the way of building the library in the Holbrook Palmer Park. In fact, the slogan covered up intent to use a significant portion of the library funds available to cover approximately forty-five percent of the cost of the grounds and exterior amenities of the whole site. It is time to move on from that sleight of hand to help the library finally be built. Thank you for your patience in hearing me out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members would like to make comments related to the items we already discussed? Somehow I'll close down, we're on to, we're related to general funding, George, can you do that?
I think it's where, in terms of, you've got some brief, you've got the staff report there, it talks about some of the history of the funding of the projects involved. So this is a conversation about the whole project, so not just the libraries, the civic center portion of this project. You know, and in particular, that's where the funding issue is. The funding shortfall with respect to information versus general fund availability. So the recommendation was to have a comfortable conversation, brainstorm a way around that funding to enter plus a debt. I've talked about some of the options, talked about the situation, the situation, the council wants to talk about. That's most part of this funding conversation. And that was funded by the local, that's what.
Thank you.
Providing direction on that, the, the, to the overall project, yes. Providing direction on what the issue is, related to the overall project, yes.
Any questions for staff? Any questions? Rick, please ask another question. Okay, uh, Bill, any questions? Elizabeth? Uh, any members of the public wanna make comments related to the funding component? Since now I'm gonna close comments on the funding component, back to council for final comments related to the funding. Elizabeth, Mary?
Jeez. Okay. Um, we talked about the situation that we faced at the June council meeting, uh, after we received the two bids that came in a hundred and forty, a hundred and seventy percent of the estimate. And, um, unfortunately, the item came up very late, I think Wally was the only person left in the room. And, uh, the decision at the eleven-thirty hour, if I recall, was that we would target the sixteen, a budget of sixteen million dollars on, uh, on the library, and I think it was twenty-four million on the admin police building. And I, I didn't, I, I think I made a comment then, but I didn't really understand my thinking because of the late hour. Uh, and I've done a lot of thinking about this. It is absolutely wrong for us to, to try to design, develop, and target building the most important structure in the history of our town around a limited budget item, and that budget item is what we're left with when we were, when we raised only six point five million dollars of a targeted twenty-five million dollar private donation fundraiser. We were eighteen point five million dollars short of our target, and we had never dealt with that. And now to try to downsize our building when the bids came in as high as they did by something like ten or fifteen or million dollars, I believe is the wrong approach. Uh, we've spent five million dollars to date designing this building, working it through the public, we've had many, many, many public meetings, and a lot of attention has gone into this building, and I believe both of these buildings are extremely well-designed. That doesn't say that there aren't value engineering costs that we can cut from them, but to try to use just the amount of money that we have as the goal and to downsize the buildings or create lean-up buildings that are the cheapest possible thing we can do, because that's the money we have, is the wrong approach. I think we should have the guts to say, "We're gonna go out there and raise the money that we need," and we should figure out how to do it. We should design the building that we want, that's right for our community, and that our community is going to feel is a there, there, that, that, that we can come to for the next fifty to seventy-five years. And if it costs us twenty million dollars, which is what we expected to raise, and we failed to raise it, we should go out and we should do a bond, or we should do some other kind of fundraising to raise the money to build the building. And we, and, and this is a discussion about the admin police building. We have the money to build the police, the library, we should build it now. Uh, and I think we should build the admin and police building, and we should build it right, not wrong, but we have to raise the money to do it, and we just have to bite that bullet and figure out how to raise the money. So, sorry to be so strong about it, but I think it's a, it's the most strategic item that I believe I've faced in five years sitting on this council.
Elizabeth?
I'm gonna defer my comments.
First of that, Mike?
Sure, I, I, um, obviously, I'm alive, and, and, what he says, um, carries great weight with me, but I, I don't agree on this particular one. I, I think that we've got an obligation to live within our means on it. I, I'm reluctant to go out and borrow money, actually, we've got a pretty powerful message from the community that, that they don't want us borrowing money or, or, uh, building what, what they perceive to be an overly ritzy, um, facility. So I, my strong preference is to try to, to build the best building we can, to build it on a budget that we can afford, and make sure we actually get it built. Um, I'm also concerned with the possibility that it never gets built, because, uh, you know, we could be chasing these figures for a long time. So that's, that's, that's my thing, I would prefer to hit a target that we can afford and get it built. And by the way, I, that is different for me than the library, and I have a hard time working on exactly, like, so much more comfortable with the library funds advancing, except that it seems like that's a, a path that we have, is a guaranteed process. I think a loan is a difference, whether it's your initiative or a loan, whether it's a different, different...
Thank you. Uh, Bill?
Um, so I agree with the, with the idea that we should revise the numbers with regards to the library, and, uh, I'd like us, you know, we've been waiting long enough, as Wally's pointed out, for, for a new library, it's sorely needed, and, and we need to get going with that, evaluate the costs and things, and we need to make sure that we remember that these, this is a public building, and, you know, it should be built to last, but that doesn't mean it's, it's a more refined building and a more posh building than many, many of the homes that are here. Secondly, on the, on the building, um, of the administration and police building, um, I'm more with, with Mike, I think that, I think I very blocked that up, I'm not in favor of borrowing money. Feedback to me from the public has been very, very negative with regards to certificates of, of participation and other methods where we wouldn't have to go ask them for that. We put out a, a ballot measure which, which passed, um, not by a, a, a large amount, but we did put out one, and we said, "This is what we think that, that it's gonna cost." And so if it's gonna cost substantially less, people are expecting us to say, "Well, you've gotta really take a hard look at the building." There are things in that building I think can be taken out, uh, that can be changed, and I think that we have to make those hard choices. Um, it's the same as anybody else that's out here in the audience, uh, you know, they have a checkbook, they know what they can afford, and, and they move forward with that. We have other things that we need to spend our money on as well, besides building the new building. So I'd like to keep to the budget that we've got for the new admin PD building, restructure it if we need to, maybe delete some things, um, and, you know, find some alternate ways. There are, there are nice-to-haves, not-have-to-haves in there. And, you know, I'm sure when we meet again, we'll be able to discuss those things more openly. So, you know, I want to make sure that we do that, because our infrastructure, other costs, such as our, some of our drainage programs, such as our streets and things like that, they can't be ignored, you know, we're putting them essentially, we're doing, continuing them, but we're not doing them with the same robustness that maybe we would have done if we, if we hadn't, uh, you know, had this large expense. So we've got a lot of money in our reserves, I think we're in pretty good shape, just as we told the public when we went out to the ballot measure, but I think we need to stay with our budget, and that may take revising the, uh, some of the aspects of the building and reducing the size. Thank you.
Elizabeth?
I'm very disappointed in my council members, um, for not having, uh, some vision at this point. Um, there's talk about the ballot measure that, uh, I guess, uh, Councilmember Whitmer's referring to is the one that was just last June, uh, that, uh, was prompted, uh, that we had to get, um, the voters to approve us, uh, to have the ability to use general funds, access general funds, uh, for the public building. That was because five years ago, in 2012, we had in hand a free design, we went out for a design competition for a new civic center, two architects competed, we held public meetings, the public weighed in and chose one. We were on track to be able to build a new civic center and police department back in 2012. But the council at that time, on a three to two vote, and, uh, there was one council member that was on council at that time, insisted on cutting that, uh, making, putting a stop on it, and, uh, putting it out for a ballot measure that insisted that the town center would be built primarily by private donations, because we had two million dollars in the building department fund, so by private donations only. For five years, our fundraising effort, uh, fell short, it, they tried, the residents of Atherton said, "No, you know, do a bond, do, uh, public financing, we're not gonna do private financing for a public building," unlike when, uh, Portola Valley went out with Bill Lane leading the charge of their fundraising, and they raised seventeen million dollars. I was naive, because I thought the, the residents of Atherton would step up. If Portola Valley could do it, of course, we could do it, but that didn't happen. So our fundraising, Rick DeGoye is absolutely correct, our fundraising target of twenty-five million dollars fell short to only six million dollars, and maybe six and a half, and so we have a funding shortfall. We cannot build a building to our needs that is, uh, even the size of the facilities that we currently have for twenty-four million dollars, and you will soon learn that, that fact, and it will be a, an eye-opener. So there, I don't know of, any other public jurisdiction that takes general fund money and builds a public building without some kind of financing vehicle. That, it's just unheard of, that it just doesn't happen. Half Moon Bay borrowed money or, from the county to build their library. Pacifica is using county money to build their library, because they don't, you know, don't have the donor funds. But i- it's just, it's, it's not that we have to live within our means, it's, we have to live within our means if we take on debt. We have no debt, Atherton has no debt, and we didn't want to take on debt. I guarantee you, we will not be able to move forward with this project with that attitude that we will not do any kind of certificate participation or a bond, uh, to fund our shortfall. We are not building the Taj Mahal, we are, we, that, the, the building is skinny down, we have been working to skinny it down even more, but it's, it's just, it will not happen. And this is what has happened in the past, over the last twenty years with, uh, this project coming up. And when the rubber met the road, council did not have the, um, foresight and the vision to say, you know, "Let's do it, let's..." It, it's like the, the Empire State Building, you know, it started construction when? Nineteen twenty-nine, right when the stock market crashed. They could've said, "Oh, we can't do this, we can't, you know, fund this, we can't pay for this, and we have to stop," but they pushed through and they built it, and then it's a hi- iconic structure. So I'm not, we're not in that position. We have very strong financial, um, uh, statements right now, we have strong, uh, property tax revenue. What we don't have, our voters did not renew our much-needed parcel tax this last November, in, uh, November twenty-seventeen, which had been in force since nineteen seventy-eight, and that brought in one point eight million dollars every year at a modest rate for most people of seven hundred and fifty dollars a year, which is, you think about that, you go, you know, I, it, it's, and that paid for road repairs and drainage. As of June thirtieth, twenty eighteen, that money stopped. So going forward, we don't have that one point eight million dollars anymore for our road repairs or our, um, drainage, uh, improvements, which is a shame. You know, people are saying, "We gotta bring," why did it, why did it fail? We gotta bring that back. So we can finance the balance of the cost of this new PD and admin building. The need is there, there's no doubt that the need is there, that we will not be able to build the building for twenty-four million dollars.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Um, as you can tell, uh, it's an exciting issue. I, uh, I am of the belief that there's a perception that everybody believes that the people within this town are actually the wealth, and the town is not that wealthy, and that's a true statement, because we only make eight and a half cents on the dollar. That's reality. We are in a community that has a champagne budget, and we are a mure budget town, because we just don't have the revenue source, and that's just the way it is. As we move forward with the civic center, as we move forward with the library, um, very respectful of the library, um, there is some consideration for spending figures that makes us all uncomfortable to an extent, because we still wanna be responsible with taxpayer dollars. Um, but I think that we'll get to a point where we get some understandings of what we want with the county system and what, um, revenue sources that we have available, within reason. I think we're gonna get there. As we move into the, um, civic center, uh, the administration component and the police department, it's not a matter of wants, it's a matter of needs, and I think that when anybody that is aware of what the facilities look like, it's frankly embarrassing. Um, and it's sad, because it's in Atherton, but it's what we have, and it's what we've been able to survive with, because we haven't had the revenue sources or the ability to create a structured infrastructure replacement fund for buildings for a whole number of reasons before I got here. But the problem we have here today is, we just don't have the money for a facility based on present market conditions, and we have to put something into play, because the buildings here are atrocious. Uh, there's no other word for it. Um, I think being responsible is a message that the residents have asked us for, um, and I think we're trying to get there by doing value engineering, and we haven't even gotten into the next phase, which is the administration and police department component, because that's really where some drill down value engineering, because where the money's just not there. The fundraising component and the perception that the town has money has impacted our ability to make that work. I think that if we all put our head together and say, "We're going to make a responsible and reasonable building," uh, and value engineer it down to where it's responsible and getting close to where our marks are, I think that the option, if necessary, um, to do certificates of participation to cover up what a potential gap is, because it's not about pushing it off, and it's frankly not fair to the employees as well, and our residents, because we have an obligation to make sure that the infrastructure, that if something does happen or the residents' needs come into play in the future, that we're here to provide in that. If an earthquake occurs, that the mobile homes or the units that we're in, just because we keep pushing this cam down the road, it's never really going to be affordable, because we don't have a whole lot of revenue sources, and we have a whole lot of demands. Therefore, there's going to be a time where there are potential, if there is a gap, that we have to consider an option, which is most likely certificates of participation to cover that. We should be prepared for that option if we have to pull the trigger and there is a gap. Um, if the fundraising component, if people still feel and are generous and we still have the ability to collect money, I don't think we, any of us up here, or anybody has ever said, "We wouldn't be willing to take them on." Um, but I think that we're, we've just gotta get to that point where we value engineer both sides of the project to get to a point where we're gonna have to pull the trigger to make sure the infrastructure's here for the residents, that they're gonna expect us to be here if something does happen. So, um, I think that that's a reasonable step, um, but if you're asking, I think that you have three people that would say that, uh, if necessary, certificates of participation, I don't think it's unreasonable to have, um, the gentlemen that have proven up here before us in the past to update us on what the current conditions are related to certificates of participation. We obviously wouldn't need the certificates of participation until we were in the second year of our development, because we'd have to cover that gap, that the process has to start. Is that reasonable to assume, George?
Well, it depends on what you're using the COPs for, because we talked about with the cash flow spreadsheet. We were only using the COPs for cash flow. If there is a gap based on the design of the building and the bids that they come in, there's a funding gap, then you'd be using the COPs for the closed-out construction gap, not just the cash flow gap. If you have the purposes, um, but yes, they wouldn't... For future purposes, but yes, they wouldn't even probably start it in the new project cycle.
Well, I think that we need the COPs just in an operational perspective because we don't have the operational funding component.
Assuming that it's come in on target and we reduce the size of the building.
Correct. If everything comes in on target, assuming no overages, we're still gonna need an operational COP.
Yes.
Please.
So today at the PMC meeting, we discussed the admin police building for the first time. And that building is about 29, designed at 29,000, 28,500 square feet. And one of the analyses that was done today was, in order to get to the budget that we need to get to, which was the $24 million number, let's look at the square footage cost and how much we need to reduce the building to be able to do the budget. So this is design a building based on budget, not design on what your community needs. And we would need to reduce the square footage from 29,000 square feet by 13,000 square feet, which would, which means a building that is much smaller in square footage than we currently have in our seven little temporary buildings that have tarps on the roofs and, and the facility that is falling apart. That's not the way to design a building. I, I, I would agree. I think that there's two ways to deal with this. We can do it through a funding mechanism. Personally, I think the fairest thing for the community is to do a bond. And my, I hear what you said and I respect what you said. I'm very conservative. If anybody wants to not spend money, they should give it to me because I don't spend money. But I'm, but seriously, we had 52.5% of the voters vote for the parcel tax with no organized campaign. And we would need 55% people to vote for a bond. And we, there's no way we can do it without an organized campaign. I mean, if the community doesn't want the Civic Center, we shouldn't build the Civic Center. And if the community won't vote for it, we shouldn't build it. But we need it and we should build it right. I think that, and that's one way. That would be my preference, but I do think there's another way. We can do COPs and we can use reserve funds. We have a very substantial reserve that we haven't touched. We haven't, we, we said we're not gonna touch it. I think it's 30%, is that right? 30, 35% of our operating budget? We could, we, we could take the, the, you know, 15% component of that, that's the extra reserve and say, "This is one of the times where we should use our extra reserve." It, it's not like we don't know that there's not gonna be revenue for Atherton. I, I think that, and when we proposed the property tax that got defeated in November, it was for only three years. Because we knew once we finished building the Civic Center, we'd have enough tax revenue that we didn't need the property tax. So, the parcel tax. So at this point, we could, we could avoid going out for a bond, but I think we have to use some of the reserve funds.
It's 35%.
Okay, we're using reserve funds. That's what we're there for. And we need to get money by comment on the COPs that seen by the community is not asking their permission. Doing a bond measure and getting their permission, I think, is fine. However, because then they're voting for it. But the, the, the comments that I've been receiving have been based on our discussion several months ago where we talked about COPs and we could do these short-term loans and we don't have to go out. And, and yes, as, you know, as has been pointed out to us, the council may act in that direction and the council may do that and it does not need the, the population's okay. But being, being above board, way above board, where they have a chance to say, then I think that that's fine. But using our extra reserves, I think, is an excellent idea. That's what we've been saving the money over the last couple of years and not spending it because we knew this was coming. So, so, you know, that's more or less.
All right. I think we made that one up enough. And I don't think you're asking anything else because you already had a direction on the other.
Correct.
So we're gonna go ahead and close this item, well, wait, I should say, the last opportunity for final comments on this, breaking number of the public. Saying none, I'm gonna close final comments. And I don't know if anybody else has anything else to say because we're gonna move on. Perfect. We're moving on to 13. I apologize. No, no, we're gonna go public hearing after we do. Sorry.
Should I put myself aside?
I'm gonna try to get Carol out here. And I know it's gonna be quick because we've kinda had it over a little bit. So let's go off the floor on item number 13 and just get Carol in and out of there. Steph? I want you to jump on the stage.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Sorry. So originally established by the county government board, some questions, 1912 is the county free library. We were a member of the county library JPA. Since it was established in 1999, we're one of the original members as well. There's a tax related to that, as we've all just been discussing, the relation to library funds. And there have been, what's initially they're called donor funds, which is excess taxes that can page into that system that exceed the amount of cost that pays to operate our library. For a while, the JPA has been talking about revising those, uses of those donor funds. And as we talked about already this evening, the JPA revised agreement as we before you now talks about after the library's doors are opened and it's operational, at that point, moving forward, 50% of those excess funds go to the county library system, 50% remain with the town solely for use for library purposes, ours within the town, the county's within the county library system. Councilmember DeGoya has been on the library JPA board and has been working with the library JPA subcommittee on revisions to the JPA agreement. That's pretty much all I have on it. And Rick, do you wanna add any further comments to it?
Well, I think the right way to look at the amendment, there, there are amendments proposed, both the JPA agreement, it's a restatement of the JPA agreement, and the bylaws. And I think the right way to look at them is there are two important sets of amendments. One set of amendments, which will deal with everything except the donor, of the donor fund issue, will go into effect as soon as it's adopted by eight cities and it's previously been adopted by seven. So I think the county also has to vote for it and I don't think the board supervisors has voted on it yet. And that, so that's one set of changes. And there's a lot of cleanup and, and other changes that we don't need to go into. The only one that was based on our request, what, and the way that ultimately came out is the library agreement, the JPA divides our member libraries into small and large. And previously, it was based on a certain population size and the small libraries, the library would pay for 40 hours of library services and the large libraries, the, the library would pay for 60 hours of library services. And if any municipality wanted their library to be open for more than 40 hours, then they could use municipal funds to have the library be open longer. Atherton chose to use some of our donor funds to have the library be open for 57 hours. That, the number that creates the breakdown of large and small libraries has been reduced from 10,000, which had Atherton be a small library, to 6,500, which will now make Atherton be a large library. So in fact, the library will pay for 60 hours rather than the 57 that we currently have. I, I don't consider it a really material issue, but it's an issue we asked for and I think it serves our, our library users. All of those things go into effect as soon as this is approved. The donor fund change, which changes the excess taxes, i.e. the taxes that are paid in any year in excess of the operating cost for the library. And currently, 100% of those excess taxes go into a trust fund for the use by the donor city. So our 1.4-some million dollars of excess taxes and link goes into a trust fund that is held for our use for the library purposes that are approved by the governing board of the library and basically any library purposes approved. The, once this change occurs and this change doesn't take effect until the new Atherton library is open, then those excess taxes will be split, 50% going into a trust fund for Atherton and 50% going to the general library system, supporting the general library system. And as I mentioned earlier, and I think this is something we probably wanna bring by the governing board, but, but I'm, I'm getting support from everyone that I would need to know supports it, that if we need to borrow money for the future from those excess library funds, that that's available for us to do and then paying that back will come out before this 50-50 split. So, but this is a big change and it will be looked at every three years. So it's not like this is locked in forever. There's some flexibility that we have if, if it turns out that it really is not in our interest, the library's interest will be reconsidered.
Good.
And I, and it, it's absolutely to accommodate our request that it doesn't take effect until after the new library is open.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Oh, Elizabeth, yours first.
I just wanna make a point that there are only three cities that are in the situation that Atherton is, which are part of the JPA, that has excess funds, tax funds above operating expenses, and that would be Portola Valley and Woodside. And they have consistently, I mean, ever since I've been on the JPA and now I'm an alternate, but they come back to the board and they, you know, say, "We're gonna remodel, we're gonna do this." And the board says, "Yes, you can do that." So they use their funds. Their, their excess number is not nearly what Atherton's is. But I remember in 2008, when I first started running for council, the excess donor funds were like maybe 700,000 and it's grown exponentially, as you can tell, and it is scheduled to continue to grow similarly like the fire district.
Any other questions for representatives of the library JPA?
Questions, yeah. Two questions. Question number one, Rick, you said that the, it's gonna be good for three years and it goes into effect right now, so by the time we complete it on one...
It goes into effect once the new library opens.
For the change in the donor funds.
All the others, the others aren't reconsidered every three years. The only one that's reconsidered every three years is the donor fund issue.
So in 2025.
Correct. Okay.
That's question one. And question two was, when I read the documentation, it looked like some of the edits were adding an operations committee. And when I looked at the content of personnel that were assigned to that and what they did, it looked a lot the same and I just didn't understand. And you don't have to answer it here, but it just, you know, since you're on the board, it looked like they did a lot of the same, not everything, but maybe there was somewhat redundancy there. And that was in Article Three, where you're adding an operations committee.
That looks like the bylaws. That's the bylaws. Yeah, that's, and Rick addressed it. I think that's just a cleanup item. I think the operations committee hadn't previously been specifically referenced in the bylaws and the operations committee is operational.
George?
The operations committee is the executive chief executive officers of each of the cities that sit on the operations committee. Where the governing personnel, the personnel committees may have a board.
Mike, any other questions?
Well, the language completion and opening is, is good language, I think, I have to say.
Any other questions? Saying none, I'll bring it out to the public. Any members of the public would like to make a public comment on this side?
Supervisor.
Oh, Carol. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol, who I serve on the library JPA. I just wanna thank Rick for really all the hard work he did. We had a donor fund subcommittee. We met on and off for a couple of years. We hammered out a lot of stuff. Wasn't always, it, it wasn't always totally agreeable, but we came to a positive conclusion for the town of Atherton and I think for the entire library system. And I wanna thank you very much, Rick, for all, all your hard work and a lot of the education that you did for all of us.
Thank you. Perfect.
I'm really glad that you were able to handle it with such finesse, Rick and the other members of the committee, but I remembered discussion about us withdrawing from the JPA. But I imagine if we did that before, we would get some funds to build a new library, so that's not a smart move.
Well, I don't mean to interrupt you, but that's true. But it's also, this is a remarkable library. It's been identified as, I think, the fifth best library in California and the 11th best library in the United States.
Wow.
So what, it, it's not just a self-interest thing to make sure we can build our new library, which of course it is, but this is a remarkable library.
Yes, it is, and it has all sorts of wonderful events. And I, I just, this is, this is not this topic, but just, I agree. I think we really need to build something nice. I was seeing the changes in the architects. I didn't have too much time because I was, you know, reading it during the meeting, but, you know, it seems like it was, the design was really being reduced to a very pedestrian level that I really didn't like. And basically, as far as fundraising, just to throw a little bit of levity into it, on August 28th, St. Dominic's in the city has their annual fair. And one of their fundraising things for the fair is dunk a Dominican. So if we can get bulletproof glass and we can get some people like Gates to, you know, allow himself to be dunked in cold water and charge, you know, $1,000 a bun, maybe we can, anyway, that's just for fun. Anyway.
Any other members of the public? Saying none, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comments at that council for final comments. Not sure Elizabeth and Rick will have anything to say. I would like a suggestion first. Just in a point of clarity before the motion, that we get a letter from the county, just a little clarity on if in fact, as we're making these decisions, if we can get a letter from the JPA board related to the donor fund contribution and that, for example, because the language in the agreement says 2021, what I would be looking for is the degree of flexibility and willingness from the JPA board's part is in clarity, let's say, for example, that the project is done, but yet we defer some of the items that, like for example decking or something of that sort, that would not be available or the funding source wouldn't be available, we defer it to after 2021 and maybe a certain type of contingency is already issued for the entry to the library. So it's functional, but yet we're not done with finishing it. Just a point of clarity that the donor funds would still be applicable after we indicated that 100% to the library is to be finished. Just kind of a clarity. So I'm willing to entertain your motion.
I made a motion that the council approved the intended bylaws for the same county that's already in the powers of authority. And the second amendment is the powers of the community between the county San Mateo and the cities of Atherton, whose names is Palmba to the foster city of Hennepin. Mill Gray, Pacifica, Fort Alleys, and Cross in Woodside relating to library services.
Can I hear a second, please? All in favor? I'm assuming there was no further discussion because we're out of this. Thank you very much. Thank you very, very, very much for making it through and urging it to continue. Um...
It actually says...
Oh, I get it. I can't.
All right, chief. 30 seconds or less.
This is like my third appearance on this theater stage. First, I, I just wanna check two things on the people that are in the room. Are there anybody here for public hearings, eleven and above? If not, I'm gonna go ahead and go, stay on the regular agenda and I'm gonna go back to the end because I'm gonna torture staff to the end, including the chief. That was my whole intent. I was on the edge of my seat there. I knew you were knocking over. We're gonna move on to item number 14 and authorize the city attorney. And I guess, Robert, your...
That's mine, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. The recommendation from staff is that the council authorize the city attorney to prepare the city manager to execute an agreement amendment with Tetra Tech Incorporated to provide an alternative stormwater detention facility sites assessment. As you may recall, at your May sixteenth council meeting, staff requested direction on next steps for a water detention facility project, the potential steps for council consideration at that time included proceed with finalizing, finalizing the plan and specifications for the water detention project at Holbrook Palmer Park, or two, stop work on the water detention project at Holbrook Palmer Park and continue the search for new location, or three, stop all work. After much discussion, the city council directed staff to move forward with option two, which is to stop work on the water detention project at Holbrook Palmer Park and continue the search for new location. And thus, the proposal, which is attached to your staff report from Tetra Tech, if council approves this agreement, amendment for not to exceed fee of seventy thousand six hundred and twenty, Tetra Tech will search for new potential water detention facilities that could be fully paid by Caltrans as part of the town's cooperative implementation agreement. And Mayor, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Marty. Any questions for Marty?
Just to get, you said that the Caltrans will pay the seventy thousand?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions for Marty? Rick? None. Any members of the public would like to make a comment on this? Please step up.
I'm a little bit concerned with the choice of alternative sites, that there's only one meeting with a seventy-two hour notification of when the meeting is, and since, you know, if they choose an alternative site, I think sometimes it takes more time than seventy-two hours and just one meeting to get adequate input from perhaps the neighborhoods that the alternative sites might disturb. So I would like the suggestion in fourteen change, once the alternative sites are found, that we have more than one meeting, because I think it'll take time for people who live in those areas to, you know, get the word out and organize.
Any other members of the public have any comments on this item? Seeing that, I'm going to close public comments. We might get through this quickly. Any final comments by councilman?
I just approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Sorry.
If we need additional public input and data, it'll be far as well.
Absolutely.
We're going to move on to the next desirable one, which is number fourteen.
Thank you. So tonight we are before you, council members, to request additional direction as we continue to evaluate amendments to the heritage tree ordinance. Just as a brief summary, the planning commission recommendation on a series of amendments to the heritage tree ordinance was brought to you in May. You gave staff some specific direction. Yes? Yes?
We actually have to have a vote because it's a matter of law, for the public's consumption. Do you want to vote on the Tetra Tech, member fourteen?
We all voted in favor.
The other side, Matt, not to turn forward.
Yeah, vote, vote.
He didn't vote.
So do I have to?
He doesn't, but if he don't vote, you're registered as a.
Absent.
It's okay, I just wanted to, because everybody kept saying he voted yes, he voted yes.
That's what he actually said. But now.
This is the most. This is a study.
He said yes.
He just said yes.
For a point of clarity, the city attorney on the way to China, we know he's here. Rick now joined the voting, he's here now, sorry. Back to, sorry, we're going to go back to the agenda. Sorry. Those were the words here.
So the two specific requests that staff is asking for council direction on, again, as we continue evaluating amendments to the heritage tree ordinance, so no request for any formal decision, but just for direction to staff. Beyond the specific bulleted item lists that you directed staff at your May hearing, we would like to discuss further revisions. First of all, should the council want to provide more direction to staff, if our existing draft ordinance as the way it is crafted should be articulated in more detail to provide clear standards for future removal requests, right now, those standards are quite broad. It just references consistency with the general plan, which can make it both confusing and difficult for the decision makers as well as for the community in their evaluation as to whether a tree could or could not be removed. The second point of direction that we are requesting is how you'd like to move forward with future discussion. One suggestion that's put forth in the staff report is following tonight's meeting, any additional direction that is received by the council, plus the direction that you gave to us at the May hearing, staff would take all of that direction and incorporate it in a further refined revised draft ordinance for additional discussion. We are requesting if you'd like to have that discussion potentially held in the form of a joint study session with the planning commission before a formal ordinance is brought back to you with the request for action. If not, that same approach would be taken in terms of the, the method of revised ordinance being brought back for another round of discussion.
So, before my greetings, council, just for a second, I know you probably all have a ton of questions, but following her recommendation of bringing it back, you know, that we should have been working or wish we were working with the planning commission before, before they spend any effort into rewriting an ordinance, I think that if September's joint session with the planning commission is a good way to put our heads together and we can, does that sound reasonable in leaving this item for further discussion based on staff's?
Before we spend the time to rewrite the ordinance?
Correct.
In the planning commission law, in other words, you're just providing the planning commission with bullet points and not rewriting the ordinance?
Correct. Does that sound reasonable to colleagues? Because I know the planning commission had a lot of interest in this topic, and I'd really like to hear what they have to say.
I think that's the, that's where it goes.
That's good.
I strongly agree with that. I would like to make a comment.
Absolutely.
Which is, it appeared to me when I read through the draft ordinance and the tree preservation guidelines, that, that, I thought the bullet points were accurate in the staff report that, that identified the general feedback from the council at the May meeting, but it appeared to me that there were two of those bullet points that weren't incorporated. One was the redwood tree should not be added as a protective in the local area, and the other was the eucalyptus trees should be added to the non-heritage list, given their high fire danger. I think that's probably blue gum eucalyptus in, and I noticed that the blue gum eucalyptus were added to the list of the trees that would not be encouraged to be planted in town, but they weren't added to the list of the trees that were the non-heritage.
Great. So the draft, the draft ordinance that was included in the report as an attachment, that version was not updated since your May hearing. The thought was to just take all direction cumulatively and then integrate it into a revised draft ordinance.
Yeah, and I brought these up to city manager. I brought these up during the meeting and I just want to make sure that they get covered. I've spoken previously to Sally about this as well, when she made the presentation. Many people are, it turns out that putting in driveways where you're excavating and then you're putting in, you know, compacting, then you're putting in a gravel base and then reinforced four or even bigger, deeper cement, that's not included as a hard surface, yet it's, it's built exactly the same way as a, let's say, a footprint for a greater than ten by ten building. And, you know, I said, I thought that we needed to have that put in, and I would like to see that included in there. Secondly, and although it's, it's in the, the base report of how the examples are today or how the, how the process is today, I do think that more attention needs to be paid towards border trees, whether they're on the property that's being developed or not. Oftentimes, the architects will not show those, the neighbor's trees on there, but they are, the TMZ extends well into, into the property that they're developing, and if they don't put that on, or as a verification, I think that when we go on site, do the checking, I do believe that they need to verify that that's, you know, that if they weren't shown, that they need to be addressed and they need to be identified and then marked off. So I, those are two things that I felt very strongly that needed to be, to be addressed, as, as well as I know that we're going to be talking a little bit more about how big the TMZ should be, and I know that the, some of the builders, the builders forum, they had some strong, strong concerns about what you could do in those areas, so, so I look forward to the follow-up.
Any other questions for staff? I'm going to ask if any members of the public have any comments on this items that were trying to move people along. Seeing that, seeing Greg, welcome, Greg. I'm going to close public comments. And council final comments that Rick and Bill have already done. Elizabeth, Mike.
Good. I, I, I want to have the meeting.
I agree, and I think that there's consensus, so unless Michael objects for.
We're not going to get a lot of one on this.
I would have a question at some point about, I find an interesting sentence that he said, "Sixty-five tree ordinance has never substantially prevented a property owner from moving to a local area." I'd like to understand that about me. At some point, if we have to do it now, we can do it at the larger meeting, but. That's a good question. It's a little deeper into. All right. Thank you very much. We're going to go ahead and take that as staff direction and a joint session. We don't need, we don't need any more action items. Let's go ahead and move to item number sixteen.
Sure, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. We're looking for some direction and feedback regarding notification to property owners along the fence line of Holbrook Palmer Park. Previously, you've received reports in both October and June regarding the location of the fence lines of our neighboring properties as they relate to the property line of the park. We received some direction at the June sixth meeting with regards to preparing notification letters, we wanted to see those. We have two attached letters for you to provide comments on, one relating to instances where the, where the fences are located on private property, and another where the fence is located more into the park property, and they both have excerpts that have been added in the instances that they have gates that provide direct access from the private property to the park. There's also a table of the various property owners that have, that are looking along that fence line, those that have gates and kind of the type of fence that they have. And so we are here to, here asking for your feedback on those draft letters.
Thank you, Robert. Any members of council have a question for Robert or any other members of staff? Elizabeth, please.
So, um, the, the table of addresses with the number of gates, I count sixteen gates, is that the total number of gates that we have along the park or, or are there more that may not have any kind of encroachment?
I walked the fence line back behind all the things, those are the number of gates that I counted as we looked at that, at that, and that extends, it does not count the neighborhood gate to the.
Right, yeah.
To the Felton Gables.
Yeah.
So, yes.
Again, the neighborhood gate?
The neighborhood gate is not counted in this. These are the gates to the private yards.
Council members of the board, I understand you had a couple notifications.
Let me look it up. Mike, please.
Just on the letter, we asked to sign, if we assume that many people ignore letters that they receive, what, what, is there any plan, next step, or what happens if they ask you to release them or they don't do it?
Well, I think that, well, our intent is to send an initial notification, and if the council feels inappropriate, we can send a follow-up letter in like two weeks after the initial one. We're giving them basically a period of time, as was suggested at the last council meeting, wherein if you come in now, we're not going to charge you. And so it's kind of an encouragement to say, if you're going to apply in the letters, I have a date of September fifteenth, that is totally up to you as to if you want that to stay or change, but the recommendation that I heard was, you know, these fences have been there, gates have been there, they are inconvenient, I don't know if it's inconvenienced or not, but they have a park right behind them, they're dealing with the walkers' noise, whatever it is from the park. Let's give them an opportunity to, go ahead.
I think, I think the further extension of that is if they don't follow to that, are we going to knock on the door, are we going to ask your code enforcement, are we going to ask them to remove their gate?
Or are we going to say?
No, just, or just send another again. I have, I have a, a grammatical question on the first letter, the last phrase in paragraph one, or be subject to relocation at your expense. Could you read that last sentence and just tell me how that works?
Okay, so basically, applications submitted after this date may incur the standard permit charges of a hundred ninety-one dollars and fifty cents. The intent was, if you don't apply, we can ask you to move it.
Or be subject to reloca, oh, well, see, I think, yeah.
Or the fence.
Or, yeah, I think that needs to be a little bit fleshed out.
Well, on the fence, will you relocate that your offense? Do you want comments on the letters?
Uh, yes.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I had to make some suggestions on some wordsmithing of each letter to reflect one revocable license component of the revocable personal permit part, and to the opportunity for those property owners on Lane Place to move their fence, and then we'd be open to that. I could read those two things if the council.
Please.
So for the letter to the residents on Lane Place, it's a suggestion to add, if the property owner desires to relocate the private fence closer to the actual property line, the town will be prepared to review and approve such a request.
Thank you.
For the other letters, those along Felton Gables area, changing this paragraph that starts with, please understand, to please understand that though the town will agree to allow for the current fence to remain in its current location with a revocable encroachment permit, when repaired or replaced, it shall be located on the private property side of the property. Encroachment permits may be revoked at such time as the town determines revocations of the fences of the town, or that the conditions of the permit or any other regulations are being violated.
I thought we also said that if they, if they rebuild that fence, relocate it, that they should not be putting in a gate. Here it says, should you intend to keep access, an access gate, please indicate so on your application. That's not what we talked about. We said that when they replace those, that we were asking them to re, to not have the gate. So all we're saying here is we're perpetuating the gate issue.
I think I may have been responsible for that, at least in the, in the public meeting, because I believe that I was out of step with the rest of the council in the sense that I, I'm pretty comfortable with people having gates, because as I'm going to mention that they've got, you know, we have weddings and parties and bands and noise right in their backyard, and I feel like it's sort of like a neighbor, that you know, they can enjoy the, the park. It'll be adjusted. I, I remember it. I just.
Mr. Mayor, they're replicable, so you can take it away in the future and change and don't want them to have it.
I, I think that what happened at that meeting, Mike, and I agree, is in a, but I think that the liability component, because we had a similar thing occur at Sharon Heights, that we want to try to avoid, so I think the liability issue was a concern.
Yeah, I think you've got to, I'm on notice of the potential liability.
So what we did in the letters include some liability. We're asking them to provide us a copy of their homeowner's insurance with us as an additional insured, and in the permit, we would have language that we are not going to be responsible for that. If that's, if the liability is a concern and you would like them to keep the gate, otherwise, the letter would have to be rewritten to, you have to remove your gate by X.
And this would apply to both residents on, on Lane and Atherton as well as those in the park.
And myself only, um, as long as the liability concern, I don't, as long as it's, I don't think we have a problem. So I think it's not gonna address the problem we have. If people are using those gates to go in the park, we really don't have that problem. Our concern was the improper use of the gate or somebody else breaking into their property. So if the liability exposure is covered, I don't care. Anybody else?
Yeah.
Okay. So gate or not, as long as the liability exposure is covered. And just another question, Mike didn't get a real answer to at the end of his, um, we sent two letters. Do we send a certified letter? What do we do at the end of the day if they don't respond? I mean, how, when do we end?
Yeah, we would send those by certified mail. They indicate that we have a record of them being sent out. If we don't get responses, we can certainly come back and let you know.
Well, the council had policy direction here. Do you want us to pursue code enforcement to have those fence and indoor gates addressed the way we would like?
I don't know. I say as long as we've covered our responsibility and we've given them notice. Anybody else?
I think if the fence is on the, our property line, so there is one or two or more feet of space in the backyard that is actually public property, if they don't sign the enforcement, uh, agreement.
Encroachment?
Encroachment agreement, we should engage in, uh, an action to force them to move the fence. Because I remember the one fence that had the concrete, the horizontal concrete, what, and the kid, if, if that guy's kids were climbing next to that fence and that fence, which is our fence, fell off and hurt one of their children, I think we, there's a liability.
Well, if, if it's our fence, it's on our property, Alex, do we need any kind of enforcement? Can't we just move our own fence or, oh, just, can't we just move our fence to, to the, uh, to, to the property line?
The question that you asked was, what enforcement would we take if the owner who has a gate improperly placed somewhere? That's the liability question that the mayor was talking about earlier.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that, that made the reason.
And so I think we, we definitely, I totally agree with Rick. We need to keep that. If they don't do anything, we need to go through the code enforcement procedure to make them take care of the liability issue.
Whether they move the fence and/or do it in person.
Yep.
Got it. Okay. Um, you don't need any other, uh, standing direction?
Yes.
All right, let's, uh, move to the most exciting thing for even apologizing. I'm pretty good at cards. I couldn't see your faces. Which one do you guys want? Which one? Uh, number seventeen.
Um, item number seventeen. Um, this item is for the consideration of setting a public hearing to adopt a fee resolution amending fees and charges related to the rental fees of the Jennings Pavilion, Holbrook Palmer Park. Um, the facility can hold a hundred and fifty people or, uh, for dinner, a hundred and thirty guests. Um, and it, the rental includes the pavilion plus the patio behind the pavilion, plus the newer event garden, plus the water tower lawn and the small lawn on the kitchen side. It also includes chairs, um, and tables in the rental fee. So Catering by Dana oversees the events in the park and they've been working for the park for the past four years. And, um, with staff, they have noticed that the, the rental fees for the Jennings Pavilion are, are lower and not really at market value. So if you see on the next page, um, of the report, the staff report, um, you can see the current pricing of the rental of the Jennings Pavilion with the proposed rental fee. And then the attachment shows venues that are comparing comparisons to the Jennings Pavilion. So, um, you can see that these are similar venues. They tried to find similar venues, uh, like the Jennings Pavilion for wedding rentals or for other big events. Um, and it is found that ours is, it, ours is one of the lowest, um, within the peninsula. And you get a lot for your value, um, with all the things that it includes. So Catering by Dana did even more research. They went to the Park and Rec Committee twice and they made a motion to approve the proposed changes as, as on the staff report. So we're really just asking for a public hearing. Julie and Stephanie are here with Catering by Dana and they're welcome to answer any questions and give you some more background on why they think this is good for the town.
Please, thank you. Um, does anybody have any questions?
I have a question.
Yeah.
I, you're welcome.
You know, well, we're, we're currently at, um, on your strategy here, the comparison. Uh, twenty-five members of Jennings Pavilion, uh, holds two hundred eighty hours, but it's plus a ten to thirty percent admin fee. Now, does any of these other, uh, facilities?
Charges and.
Yeah. They do? Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah.
They.
What?
Do we want to come on up?
Yeah, in the fees that I, um, in the market research, I included them in like the total price.
Oh, in the total price, I did. Okay, all right.
So we gotta add those.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're not comparing apples to apples?
Yeah. It, it was hard to compare apples to apples because they don't, all the different venues do their pricing so differently and they include different things than we do and so on and so forth. So what I tried to do was kind of combine everything based on, say, a hundred and fifty person event. Cause that's kind of our max. We can go up to two hundred if we're outside. But I tried to make that work for the market research, add things together. Like, for example, uh, one of the, uh, community centers, they had like three or four different rooms and they all rented separate. You, but you'd wanna rent them all to be compared to the Jennings Pavilion. So I added the cost of all the difference. Does that make sense?
One more question, quickly. Compared to other venues, uh, how does the Jennings Pavilion stack up collectively? I know.
Decor.
Decorately. Decor.
Um, well, what Jennings Pavilion has, in my opinion, is, is the park.
Yeah.
You know, um, it is on the inside, a little bit dated, especially that, like the carpet. But there is talk, uh, where we've already done a whole bathroom remodel, uh, plans. That's in the works now. Sally's working on that. Um, we put a fresh, Dana came in, supplied the paint, supplied the labor for a new fresh coat of paint inside the pavilion earlier this year. Uh, we've got the event garden now, um, and people are starting to use that. Stephanie's got a wedding over there in September where they're gonna really use that event garden and we're gonna get some good pictures finally, um, to put on. We are now advertising in The Knot. Dana's, um, paying for that. I don't know if you've heard of it. The Knot is an amazing website for brides and grooms to, to figure. You can do just about everything on The Knot, including inviting your guests. It's awesome. So we've got, um, a page on that if you ever get bored and wanna look at it, see some neat pictures. We're also on Yelp and Facebook. So we're trying to get the word out, social media too.
Well, it's a big increase, though.
Are you here for?
I can't afford it.
Do we expect, I'm looking at the Fridays, twelve hundred, four thousand dollars. That's a significant.
So.
Do we expect, I'm sorry, do we expect that means that the, um, facility will be rented less frequently?
I hope not. But what, what happens is most places, the Friday and Saturdays are their higher days of the weekend. And maybe Sunday would be the lower day. Where we've had Friday as our lower day. So we do quite a few weddings on Fridays because people are wanting to change. That gives the guests the whole weekend, you know, if they can get off work early on Friday, which people do. So.
I hope you can do Friday.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Bill?
What was the, uh, thinking behind, if you do Saturday and Sunday evenings from five to midnight, it's your, it's the same price as if you use it for the whole day, which would take you all the way to midnight. I would assume.
Um, you only get it for eight hours? Are, are we talking, we're talking about the pavilion, right?
Four days, yeah.
It's only an eight hour rental, period. So we block it in, you can do a morning time or you can do an, uh, more of an evening time.
Okay, so wouldn't you say full day doesn't?
It's still.
Full day is eight hours, as opposed to a four hour rental.
But they have to be out by five?
That, out by four, actually.
All right.
So they can only do like a twelve to four and eleven to three, so on and so forth.
And I guess what was the thinking? I, I see the other prices have gone up. Not dramatically, but I guess that, you know, the Friday, five to midnight and, and then the Saturday and Sundays, um, I mean, they were substantial increases.
Right.
Where the other ones were more modest.
Right.
Was there specific thinking for that or, because that just seemed like it's a little bit high, especially for, for this location.
Going from what it was to what we're proposing. So what I had mentioned about the Fridays is actually a more desirable date to have, say, a wedding than, say, a Sunday. So we raised the Saturday and Sunday rates because those were the same rates originally. Um, those were all in place when we took over four years ago. So I didn't, how that, the timing and all that works out, I didn't do that. But the, the proposed raise on the Friday, yes, it's much higher, but because we feel like Friday's a more desirable day than a Sunday. Does that make sense?
Yes, to me.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
I still think that the increase of fifteen hundred dollars
Right.
is still a little steep, you know, especially since we're building a following.
Gotcha.
Might just say, you know, I, I heard the discussion at the Park and Rec and this is their best, if, if it doesn't work, you can reduce.
But the, can I say something? Being priced at fifteen hundred was way under the market. So that is why it's such a big jump. You're going into it at such a low price. Friday's holiday parties during December are, that's a huge day.
I was talking about Saturday and Sunday, though. The increase on Saturday and Sunday is fifteen hundred dollars. And I just thought that that was a little steep still.
But it's still bringing you to market value because it is quite, eh, as compared to other venues and for what you get, it is quite under the, at that price. Yeah, and you're trying to attract a certain clientele, I would assume. Being in Atherton, this is the only event space that we know of in Atherton. You want to attract a certain clientele, I would assume. And you wanna get that in, into that price range to attract that type of clientele.
Mike, quick question. I, yeah, just, is, does somebody have numbers for how much we're getting on an annual basis now? How much we expect to get on an annual basis?
On the revenue sheet?
You get the revenue sheet.
We get it every month.
Every month.
Over the last twelve months, uh, the town collected a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in fees from the park line for the tennis. Of that total, thirty-five thousand one hundred and thirty was the administrative fee.
Thirty percent.
Catering by Dana received eighty-five thousand and five and the town received in total, including the administrative fee, a hundred and twenty-one.
Do we have these projections for what the silver, we're screening this up materially?
And so again, yeah. And the action today is.
Bill, not with the impact of the, you know, the.
The action today is solely requesting the setting of.
Setting of.
Yeah.
I got that. The cost of maintenance of the park, bigger, probably.
The park is subsidized by about three hundred and something thousand, something, three hundred and forty-four.
Not that we're trying to.
Charge it big home mansion.
Right. Perfect, that's what you want. Are any other questions, so that we can move on? Uh, any members of the public have any comments on this item of recent rates? Seeing them, can't see Greg. But, um, all right, back to council. I'm closing all the comments. Uh, by the way, we're, we just, direction to staff.
President, that's, uh, do you have a public hearing?
Do I hear a future? Everybody says?
Yeah.
Bill? It is being set. Future public hearing. Thank you for reminding our colleagues. Next, have you got, uh, quicker than Chief, cause I have court for him. And, uh, sorry. Can we go back to eighteen? I'm sorry, there's a suggestion to write a key. Okay. So we're gonna move into item number eleven. If you give me a couple of seconds to move over to item number eleven.
Is that me?
And what we're gonna do is conduct a public hearing and give appropriate, uh, reading of the ordinance, number X, and ordinance of the town of Atherton related to false alarms. Chief, hey, nice to see you.
Hi, Mayor, council members. How are you?
Thank you.
So are we doing the public hearing? I'm not quite familiar. We're recommending public.
We're doing it.
Okay.
You're in the public hearing.
I will keep my comments brief, noting the hour and noting that I've been before you two or three times on this subject and give you a summary. What staff is recommending is revision of the current ordinance to start billing for false alarms. Um, it has become a particular problem for the police department, for the officers over the years, taking up quite a few of our resources. In twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen, we had a total of almost a thousand false alarms. And just to give you an essence of the definition of false alarm is we have to actually arrive on the property per the ordinance to make it a false alarm. So we had a thousand of those, which equates to a thousand officer hours, which is almost six point five of FTE, uh, working full-time. Uh, since February of this year, as part of our outreach and an attempt to mitigate the problem, we've been getting, we've been sending letters to residents with verified false alarms and notifying them of the problem, again, just for outreach. And to date, we've sent over two hundred of those and keeping on track. And I know there's been some issues or concerns about data and I take full responsibility for that. It's been a lot of lessons learned for me as we've been working through this, to get full data. These letters now give us hard data of the false alarms that we're gonna be experiencing. It's gonna put us on track to about five or six hundred a year that we see as false alarms. And of those, if you look at the chart, a few, according to the charts, uh, for, and this is, I'll clarify, this is my chart this time. In twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen, you see when we get to the fourth false alarm where the, where we're suggesting and recommending that we start charging. Uh, we had fifteen in twenty sixteen, twenty, twenty seventeen, and then it continues to go down. So I don't see you're gonna, you're gonna see a lot of individuals find. And in talking with staff and I think what we're already seeing, as we continue this outreach and communication, that's gonna take care of the majority. But this ordinance, as we're recommending, gives us the tools to respond to it if necessary. And with that, I will stop talking and take your comments and questions.
Any other questions from the council related to this item? Uh, Elizabeth?
So, um, are we talking about a calendar year? It says during a twelve month, one year period. Is it a calendar year?
It's a twelve month period. Cause if you did a calendar year, it's, you would start, you could be a violator of fifteen and then the calendar, you'd start over zero. So it's a twelve month period movement.
Okay, so, yeah, and, and when you're applying for the permit?
Correct.
That begins their year. That begins their year.
Well, I believe the permit's gonna be on a calendar year, but initial setup fee would be the recommended one hundred dollars.
So at what point do we start tracking a false alarm this year or someone's, is there something else?
We start tracking now. I mean, we would start tracking.
So someone comes in and initiates, we're gonna have alarms monitored by the town?
Right. This isn't, and just to clarify, this isn't just alarms monitored by the town. This would be all alarms.
Uh, so if somebody does come in, do we start the clock on that person or is it?
Yes, cause it's a twelve month period. So it would be.
But we're tracking year in, year in, correct?
Right.
So if you're, you joined mid-year, you're gonna get six months and then your, the calendar's gonna start.
No, your year's gonna start when the first false alarm starts.
No, but I'm trying to, there's two, there's two questions. When does, when does the, uh, your permit start? If you come in mid-year to get a permit, do you only pay fifty dollars, you know, fifty percent? You know, pro rate for that rest of the year and it's a calendar year renewal? So every January, you have to renew your permit?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, but then the alarm, counting the alarms, start, like if you have your first alarm in May, uh, then that starts May. So.
That starts the twelve months.
To the next May. So that's gonna be on a different calendar year. So your first alarm is always gonna be, that, that sets your annual, your twelve month period. It's gonna be a, a management data.
It's not really, and I'm glad you brought that up, cause with our RIM system, which is our computed dispatch, and we've had this business discussion, business practice, flow discussion, it really isn't within our RIM's system. Um, because it's very easy for them, just with their normal work, it, it logs it. Go back to the same address. If we go to your house, it comes up every time we've been to your house for whatever reason. It tracks that alarm. They enter it the second time and the fourth and the third. And then RIMs also works with Springbrook, I believe, with Robert, and so the finance part and the billing. We've worked with that business practice, very minimal staff time.
And then every, every year it resets itself to zero?
Not for the false alarms because it's, it's based on your, it's, no, it's based on your twelve hour, twelve month period.
So it's a roll in twelve months or is it?
It's a.
Yeah, it's a roll. Do you have an alarm? Then if you don't have another alarm.
You have an alarm, then if you don't have another alarm for twelve months, then you're at zero, and you stay at zero until you have an alarm. And then you have a false alarm.
And basically, the billing starts according to what this is at four. So if you have one in January, and you don't have another one until, you know, December.
Then you have two.
And then, let's say, you know, in, in March, April, May, you've got one. Do you have four, or is it a brand new year?
It's a year, it's the way he explained it.
It's during January with your first alarm.
Yeah, rolling twelve months.
You have an alarm, you look back twelve months, right?
Correct.
Process is said, it says within the twelve, it doesn't say a roll in twelve months, period, so I think we need to clean it up.
That's why we changed that language from calendar year that initially said, talk, working with the town attorney, to twelve months rolling.
Well, that's what's screwed it up. Any other question? Um, Chief, are there, is there an opportunity for somebody to...
You don't wanna hear the, the annual fee.
Yes, there is appeal process language in the ordinance.
I'm trying to, what is an example, something you think was a false alarm, so it can say, you know, hey, it really wasn't, this happened?
Well, it was also designed, originally designed for financial impact, possibly, but we rolled it together. It could be an accidental, something wrong with their alarm, or something unintended, um...
Power outage?
Power outage, something that we weren't aware of when we went and declared a false alarm. So it would be, I don't anticipate a lot of those, but, you know, certainly if they do, you want somebody to come in and explain what went on. There's an appeal process.
Does the letter say, come and tell us, this is here?
Yeah.
Yeah, it says call our dispatch center, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
And then we would review it, and especially, you know, financial need as well. Because none of this is designed to be punitive, we're just trying to correct behavior.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Uh, Rick, please.
Two items. Just want to clarify that the, uh, false alarm proposal, not the initial fee or the annual fee, will apply to systems that are not monitored by the Atherton Police Department.
The false alarm fees will apply to all alarms that we respond to, not just the ones we monitor. We monitor about fifteen hundred.
Right.
And I believe, Robert, there were twenty-two hundred parcels, so we, we monitor vast majority. But also, too, uh, as with other cities, those alarms are required to be permitted. Um, we plan to deal with that on a case-by-case as we go out, and you're not permitted, you now need a permit, um, which allows us to put that information into our RIM's system for more, you know, efficiency and officer safety.
But, but we're gonna, there's gonna be a fine to people that have passed the minimum number of false alarms if they're ADP and not...
Any, any alarms, how it costs for it.
Yeah, okay. And then, secondly, there, there's three different fees that we're proposing here, right? There's an initial fee that's increasing from sixty-one dollars to a hundred dollars. There is an annual fee of a hundred dollars, and there's the, uh, false alarm fee, based on the number of false alarms within the twelve-month period. I'd kind of like to discuss those separately, because I, I think the annual fee of a hundred dollars, I, I have absolutely no problem with increasing the initial fee to a hundred dollars, I think it's the right thing. And I have no problem with the proposal for the false alarms. I, I kinda wonder whether the going to two hundred dollars is the right thing, or maybe you should have a first amount of a hundred dollars, but, uh... So there might be some discussion there, but I understand.
The yearly fee.
So I'm okay, I'm okay with the proposal, but I, I really have some heartburn on the annual fee of a hundred dollars, which doesn't currently exist, and I wonder why we need that.
Uh, that was discussion with, um, maintenance, and also a requirement that then, that when they do renew their permit, to update their informations, because we commonly have information that's not accurate. And in looking at local jurisdictions, and it's in your paperwork as well, that ranges from twenty-five to fifty to eighty-five, that other agencies are charging as a renewal fee annually for those reasons. Eighty-five is the highest. Fifty seems to be about the...
So a hundred would be higher.
Correct.
So maybe we should do fifty, considering the deal.
Or we maybe would do it. I don't think people's contact details change very quickly. I think doing it, and it would be an administrative issue potentially. Doing it, doing the registration, a mandatory registration with a fee every three years, seems more reasonable to me, um, versus doing it every year. Because I agree, a hundred dollars every year is, people are gonna complain about. I do appreciate the fact that you listened and we said, you know, move the, the three false alarms, but also recognize that a lot of our, at least some people's approval may have been based on the incorrect numbers that were here, where there were substantially more, and there were substantially more alarms being reported in the report that said there were, you know, these big abusers that were in the seven to ten range, and that's what we were trying to get over. Now, now we have twenty-three and thirty-two that are occurring, that are in that high range. And I would think that there's a way that we could handle those twenty-three and thirty-two directly, as opposed to, you know, upsetting a lot of people with a hundred dollar a month, or a hundred dollar a year bill and all these other things. Because people's position was, the police department in the past has asked people, please register your, and put your alarm, and wire it directly to the, to the police department. Why? Because we want to make sure that Atherton is a secure and safe place, and that way we don't have any of this ill between, and we, you know, we can keep the place safe, and we can watch out for, for maybe serial burglaries and things like that. And, and now we're, we're kind of turning the tide there. So I agree with you, false alarms are a problem, because they take the officers away. I do appreciate the fact that you've gone from three. I think that Rick's idea of going down and having a step function is a good one. But I think we should also think about, let's register everything now, or January one, you pay a hundred dollars, and then it's another three years before we do that. Do a period of time, as opposed to do it, uh, you know, annually, because it becomes an administrative nightmare for you and for the residents as well.
Uh, it really doesn't for us, and the information with people, these things with technology we're finding, does change quite often, and that is part of the process. When we go to a false alarm, and we make contact with a person, quite often the codes have changed, the gate codes have changed, and so there is a reason to do that. And another part of this as well is, besides the actual per the ordinance false alarms we arrive on your house, that's not counting the hundreds and hundreds and the alarms every day that we get, that we start to respond to and don't, and so that's, you're just getting a piece of the entire problem, this is the biggest piece. But there's a much larger piece, too, that, you know, if you sit in dispatch for four hours and George Mount on a ride-along and experience the false alarm response, that tone is going off constantly. I can hear it from my office. Uh, it's a, it's a big problem for us.
George?
And, and another point, and I think I put it into that pre-agenda email, was that our annual cost to operate our alarm system, just the software and licensing component of it, fourteen hundred dollars a year. And then we have our trades in system...
Fourteen hundred a year?
Fourteen hundred a year. Fifteen hundred alarms every month. So we approved the budget. So there's a thousand alarms out, a thousand residences out there, and we don't monitor their alarms. So they are, in fact, subsidizing that fourteen hundred dollars a year, plus there's the dispatch time in that. So a hundred dollars from each of those fifteen hundred alarms would more than cover that, but even, but we need to offset that cost, I guess, in my point, if it's something that... Otherwise, we're subsidizing privately.
Okay, any other questions for staff? Seeing we have more questions from staff, I'm trying to actually ask members of the public, any members of the public would like to speak on this item? Do you know members of the...
I almost had you before you got up.
I'm guilty of probably having one alarm a month.
Thank you for your note, thank you for your note, sir.
Well, I, I, uh, it, it's a problem I have that my daughter wants that secure twenty-four seven. And so every time I go out, she sets the alarm, and she's set every time we go in and out, so it's, it's hard not to have an accidental tripping if you don't, you know, when you do it that much. Most people do it at night and when they're, or when they're gone. So it's a, and I'm not sure what your goal is. You wanna get them off the system and go to ADT, and you won't get traveled at all, or what, what are you trying to accomplish? Because that's what's gonna happen. I'll go to ADT, they'll get the, uh, what do you call it, the false alarms, or, and we'll go through them, and, you know, and, and we won't bother you. So you lose all the business. Now, I don't know if you, if you're not making any money, then maybe that's good. But I'm not sure what your goal is. What is the goal here? Are you trying to raise money, or are you trying to deter the people using it? What are your, what are you trying to do?
Just in a quick note, reduce the number of false alarms.
Because?
We're responding to a large volume of false alarms, and it's pulling officers away from doing other things.
All right, so you're trying to cut down on the number of false alarms?
Yeah, that's the, well, like, are there too many trash cans? Same philosophy.
And even with ADT, there are false alarms.
There will be, so if you went to ADT and you did all the false alarms with ADT, we would be billing ADT, and ADT would be billing you?
No.
No.
Take a phone, and you give the password, provided they did call, but if we had already responded.
Well, no, but we, we, I assume that ADT would prevent you from calling the police, because...
No, that's not the goal.
Huh?
Absolutely not the goal.
No, that, that's not what I...
What happens? They call the police, too, and ADT calls the police?
Yes.
Because they can't find the person at home, or what?
Uh, if they can't find them at home, and nobody responds, they're gonna have the police department respond.
Well, then maybe you should have one. I mean, if ADT calls you, that's serious enough that you should go. It's a security issue.
Not that I'm arguing that way, but ADT may have security people that actually respond, so it's the same philosophy.
They do?
They don't.
No, I don't think so.
It's not a false alarm if, when you go in the house and trip the alarm, if you then call the police and say, oops, my bad, before they get there, there's no...
No, and I do, I do that quite a bit.
Well, then there's no charge.
So I know.
At least twelve times a month.
No, we call, and normally you give them the password, and they don't come, so...
And there's no charge.
Right. And that would be true in the future.
You'd still be with us.
That doesn't count as a false alarm. Only if, if they have to go, if the officer has to go and walk around the property and all that sort of thing, then it's a false alarm.
All right, well, I, you know, if you're, if you're saying that you're trying to get the police to react to things that are more of a risk...
Provided you're still doing what you're doing, and you're calling, you're canceling, you'll still be with us.
All right, well, I, I guess as long as I understand what you're trying to do, and it's, it makes some sense, and I'm...
The chief would love to sit down with you.
Huh?
I know where he lives, so I'll help you out. Chief would love to sit down.
I'm gonna speak later, so I, I go...
That's a surprise, that's a big surprise.
I didn't want you to use your whole three minutes. Uh, any other public comments? Seeing that, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council for final comments.
Mr. Mayor? Hi. This was the original, this was the original ordinance from last time, hasn't been revised, and it doesn't have a paragraph to add the annual fee. It needs to be added...
Annual fee is done by resolution.
It's set by resolution, but this, this allows you to set it by resolution. The, all the other fees were in, all the other fee triggers were in there. So it, it should be in there. It's easy to add, and there was a typo that said, the last one said, second paragraph fee, it should be H. And we can add I, it just says, here's the annual fee, set by resolution.
It doesn't say in the original ordinance?
The original ordinance has been pretty much scrapped because of...
Those do you review before you come to us?
Um, I did la, I did the original one, but then we added an annual fee.
I just suggested.
But I have a fee.
Before I say anything, he should do that to avoid this.
Well, usually that happens, this didn't happen, because last time the police department changed this, and I didn't see it, hopefully.
So any other comments? I, I, I actually, I think Rick's phrase is a good point. There's something about a hundred dollar annual fee that just feels a little egregious. Um, and, and it feel like we're trying to encourage people to do this. I totally get both installation fee and a abusive, you know, fee. But it just, this annual fee does rub me the wrong way in a lot of ways. Bill?
Section E, eight point oh seven oh seven oh.
Please, please, sir.
Any board of the subcommittee calls on the one-year period, chair is open, assessment of a fee as set forth by resolution of the city council?
Correct, and if we add something that said the same thing about the initial fee or the annual fee, well, that's a good deal. This is false alarm. The other one is...
You guys can take this offline. We're working on Mike's question. With the fifty, to reduction of fifty dollars or no fee at all? I think just...
No, I don't think no fee at all. I think maybe fifty dollars for, like, every third year.
I, I would, I would have to...
Every third year.
I would have to agree, because I do know that, I know a number of people that fail to update their information, so there's a constant response, because they, they change something, but yes, fifty dollars.
A year, say, every third year, suppose, every year?
Every third year, does everybody like every third year?
No, every third year.
The, the thing with every third year, if it's every year, you're kind of gonna be more likely to remember.
Yeah.
Every third year, you're gonna totally forget.
For, I think every year. Every year, fifty dollars. Fifty dollars every, every year, update your information.
Well, we did a hundred dollars every three years.
Uh, so everything else stays the same. Uh, the only other thing that I might suggest, because I'd really love to get through this, is that because I don't think this applies a lot, that the twelve false alarms, we're gonna get rid of your system, do we give them a grace period of transition to a new service? Instead of...
I thought you said we weren't gonna do that.
Uh, it's right here, item number G.
Well, we sent before, it's sent before after like four or five.
This says twelve.
But now it says twelve.
Can we just add a grace period, like, allow them thirty days, sixty days, ninety days to transition to a new alarm system?
That's reasonable.
Okay? And we add that language, and is it reasonable? We're gonna cut them off, give them an opportunity to just transition some of the ADT work, correct?
How long do you want?
Just to let you know, it's thirty days.
Well, what do we, what do we...
You're sorry for our false alarm.
We don't pay your garbage fees, we don't pick up your garbage, right?
Yeah, but this is kind of a state to the emergency.
And we're required to make a...
That's not true.
So in an interest of moving this, we should, in an interest of moving this, uh, with thirty days, we have a reasonable period of time of grace.
Yes.
Okay, so let's put the grace in there, and can I get a, do you need a motion to move forward? Do you understand the language, or do you need something?
So fifty dollars every year, in terms of the annual, or the monitoring, your partner, nothing monitoring, but... Do you want thirty, thirty-day grace period, when you do that last section?
Yep.
The false alarm is still a hundred dollars, so that's a change. We'll amend the ordinance and return it again for...
First second read.
One more question?
Oh, no.
Well, I'm kind of drafted. What the, what the staff report says, is a fifty-dollar initial fee, and then a fifty-dollar annual fee.
Says a hundred dollars.
It said a hundred, but, so you said fifty dollars.
No, no, fifty-four.
Hundred-dollar initial fee, fifty-dollar annual.
The hundred-dollar initial stays the same.
Yeah, yeah, just the middle one.
And I'm assuming the annual fee you pay, you know, the first year, you pay a hundred dollars.
I, you're correct.
And you don't also pay a lot of...
You can't start that, yeah. All right, so let's go ahead and move to the second public hearing.
Don't you want to take action on it?
Do we need an action on the first? Okay, can I get a motion, please? Any further questions? With the changes we just amended, a long paper?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Plus the evolution.
Plus the resolution. Resolution goes back to second hearing.
Well, this one hasn't been, so it doesn't matter, next month is fine.
Okay, let's move on to the second public hearing, consider introduction of zoning ordinance amendment establishing the development agreement adoption procedure out of chapter seventeen point zero one of the Atherton Municipal Council, at least in custody.
Good evening. Thank you for taking me from second to last. It's fun hanging out with you guys. No, it's my fault, it's my fault. Uh, the item before you is a public hearing for consideration of an ordinance that would amend Atherton zoning code to establish the development agreement adoption procedure. Development agreements are commonly used in jurisdictions as negotiated contracts between development projects and public agencies. These agreements are utilized to memorialize, memorialize public benefits in exchange for development rights and or impacted waivers. Um, they are voluntary and negotiated between staff and the project applicant. These agreements would be, um, approved by ordinance with a recommendation by the planning commission first, and then adoption by the city council. They would also be subject to the California Environmental Quality Act review. The planning commission reviewed this ordinance at its June twenty-seventh meeting and voted to recommend the city council approve the ordinance. It has been prepared and reviewed by your city attorney. Uh, tonight's consideration... Uh, tonight's consideration is for introduction of the ordinance, and if introduced, we will bring it back to the council for, uh, second reading and adoption, I'd be happy to try to answer any of your questions.
Lisa, you, those are such wanted words, the end of, did anybody, any other questions for Lisa? Please. So Lisa, I, I don't really understand this, like, can you explain, or give me an example, for somebody who uses this?
Sure.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, I'm, I'm defer. If you say it, it's short, if you say it, it's short.
Are you done interrupting them?
Aye, I truly am.
Um, so I've worked with a lot of different development agreements in other organizations, um, and so an example might be a hotel development.
Yeah, I'm talking about residential.
Sure, so it could be, um, residential development, or maybe one of the schools, where there's not an impact associated, but they would like to, as a public benefit, maybe install a crosswalk, or a lighted crosswalk, in exchange for maybe a phased development, where they have rights that would expand a longer period of time than our ordinance. So right now, a conditional use permit's effective for a year, and if they don't use it in a year, it expires. And so this could establish longer development rights in exchange for some other community benefit.
Would, would you expect it to reply to residents?
Um, it was, it would be unlikely, but given the scale of the properties in Atherton, you never know, right? I mean, we have a small golf course in town, and, um, there's been, um, a lot of interest in doing some different improvements in the public right of way, so unlikely, but it certainly could come up.
It has been used in other residential areas, where we had gentrification, where the houses kept getting bigger and bigger and bigger, and people came in and said, I want to protect my rent to build a big house. In return, I'll give you some land for a park or something, I mean, so they put this into an agreement, and so the guy doesn't have to rush to build this thirty-two thousand square foot house. But they're not, they're not coming.
Yeah, I mean, that's another, it establishes your, you know, like, your zoning rights, right? And once it's adopted, the development agreement, it would be the rights that are in effect at that time, and then we would establish, maybe it's good for a five-year period or something.
Would, would it be more like, maybe subdiv-, if it had like a five-year or four-year?
Right, a subdivision's another good example, yes.
Sounds good.
Along with, but as the state within the guidelines of the general plan, if I remember right.
Right, you definitely need to make a general plan consistent, determination when you would approve the ordinance, yes.
So somebody could start a development agreement, and buy a lot of property, and belong El Camino, with the intent that they would continue to agitate and agitate, and get support from the council to change the general plan, so they could build a part, large apartment building, so over a period of time, and that's ideal.
Well, then it, yeah, I mean, we can't.
Get the council to agree to do that.
Well, then, you, the first action you would have to take is amend the general plan, amend the zoning, and then you could enact the development agreement.
Or the state mandates it, which is something that's actually going on.
That's correct, that's different, yes.
So I think this could potentially be a dangerous.
Well, I would say if the state mandated it, this would give you a tool to work with that developer to get some community benefits or public improvements.
It's really key about, because the communities, where they have city councils that approved some, a Walmart, or some, something that wasn't seen as positive by the whole town, but it was okay with the zoning, then a new city council would come in, and you got a developer out there that's spent thousands and thousands of dollars, and the, the city council pulls the rug out through the developer, this is to protect things like that. That was recently what this was drafted to do, it's been used in a lot of other areas, but it's just to protect.
It still has a provision there for pulling the rug out from the, it's just a rip.
Different violation.
Yeah, yeah.
After. Any other questions for staff? Let me read. Any other questions?
Yes, with the recommendation from planning commission, public hearing, sequoia, so, yes.
Motion?
Public hearing.
Any members of the public would like to make an account, seeing no members of the public have any. Close public comments, or close public hearing, the next council for final discussion. Uh, can I get a motion to approve?
Introduce.
A second, all, any further discussion? I see none, all in favor? Aye, aye. Uh, let's just go to a motion adjourned.
Yeah, aren't we gonna have public hearing?
Oh, I forgot, oh, great, I'm so sorry, I forgot.
Are we already giving to adjournments?
That's a no, I'm the adjourned vote. Yeah, I, I gotta reverse it, Greg, go ahead, you get your three minutes of time.
This'll probably be the last time I'll be here this year, so.
Really? This is gonna be second round?
There you go, oh, that's right.
Well, I've got other things I'm cooking right now, and I don't think this is gonna be on my sheet for the next five months anyway. Uh, no, I think my issue is safety, and my thought is that the three areas, one, the holdout station, two, the quad gate, and three, the schools. On the quad gates, you know, I think the thing that occurs to me is that the fire district, if anything happens, the fire district's gonna respond, I'll chief of my right there, on both suicides and collisions. Is that true on a disaster for the holdout station? So, I mean, their responsibility is, is probably shared, so, you know, and they, they seem to be in a better financial condition to spend on capital expenditures, based on what I read in the newspaper. So, uh, I, I just wonder whether we should try and reach out to them to do something on those two areas. And I'm, uh.
I think that's a good idea.
And I, I'll be glad to help you with the fire district, I could go over there and speak just as easily.
They, they meet once a month.
They meet once a month.
They, they, yeah.
By getting back to the schools, I think that's the last item I have, is, you know, I looked at the report for the chief on the instances by day, by school, by type. And you have about two instances a day in the schools, of either security or other, whatever other is, based on the statistics that they have there. And I just, I guess the question is, are we doing any background checks on those instances to see if there's any students who have characteristics that would show up on their Facebook, or their, you know, you're getting into a privacy issue here, but, you know, there is, in a lot of these disasters, there were evidences of, of students anticipating what they're do-, what they did. And I'm just saying, if you've got two instances a day in our town, between the five schools, M.A., Benwell College, Emmanuel High School, Shelby, and one other school, I think, if you add those up, you get at least two a day. And I just wonder how much we do, and whether we should, whether we're doing enough, and whether it's a violation of the First Amendment to do it, uh, but I, I just, you know, it's so easy to do nothing, because until something happens, you, everybody says, it's not in my backyard. I mean, we're Atherton, why would anything like that ever happen to us? And I'm saying, when you have two instances a day, I, I at least make sure that you don't see any tendencies in those instances that would, would provoke something more serious.
Thank you, Greg, and the chief is still willing to sit down with you. Thank you, everybody.